...of the State Board of Education to order and we will start our, um, our meeting as we usually do with a pledge of allegiance. However, there is a little change this morning. We have a student from Hazen Union, Derek Camp, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Derek?
Great. (inaudible)
Thank you, Derek.
(laughing)
Now you can go back to work.
(inaudible).
I, um, started my day off here at Hazen Union by being in the men's room and there was a young lad in there with shorts on.[48.12][48.12](laughing) And I said, "Isn't it, uh, a little cold to be wearing shorts this time of year up here?" And he said, "I'm a Vermonter."[55.01][55.01](laughing)
Did you tell him you wore two?
I did too, and I said, "But age has something to do with when you stop wearing shorts."[63.12][63.12](laughing) Um, we will, um, start this morning's meeting by going around the table with introductions. We're a little bit short today. There are three members, I think, that are not here. However, the secretary will be here at some point. So I am Stephen Morris from, uh, New Fane down in southern Vermont and chair the State Board of Education.
Kristy Hewling, and I live in Jeffersonville.
Bill Mathas, Goshen.
I'm Mark Perrin. I live in Middlebury.
Stacy Weinberger, Burlington.
Dylan McAllister, Greensboro.
Sean Ray Oler, Bennington.
Thank you.
We're missing our other student, too.
Yes, yes, unfortunately. Um, the principal of Hazen Union, Mike Moratti, Moratti, would like to say a few words. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Michael. Have a seat.
(inaudible). So I just wanted to welcome you all to, uh, our beautiful campus and our beautiful school here in Hardwick, Vermont. Um, and the superintendent, also Joanne LeBlanc, is sitting behind me, will also say a few words. Um, but I just wanted to, uh, again, welcome you. I'll let you know that the bathrooms, uh, if you are looking for them, are out through this doorway to the right or to the left. There are faculty and student bathrooms, so take care of your needs and, uh, you know, kick your shoes off and enjoy your day here. Um, and I just wanted to briefly touch base with, uh, with the board about, um, Act 77 and, uh, what we're doing here at Hazen Union School. Um, I took, I started, uh, as principal last year, uh, as, started out as a middle school principal. Um, and at the end of the year, we did a, um, we restructured our administration, um, so that I became the whole school principal and, uh, we hired a associate principal by the name of John Craig. Um, and, uh, obviously with Act 77, um, being a huge focus, um, we decided that, uh, we would really dive into, you know, what that's going to look like for Hazen students. Um, so this year, we've restructured a bit of our, of our academic day to include a support block where, uh, teachers, uh, have a group of students, um, in an advisory time. And that's really going to be the foundation for how we, um, how we start to do personal learning plans and flexible pathways. Um, you know, thinking about having guidance counselors, um, try to, try to implement, uh, personal learning plans for 300-plus students here in our school seemed a bit overwhelming. So, uh, we put in that, um, that support time, that advisory time. Um, we're using Naviance, uh, which I think, you know, is pretty much going to be probably one of the main softwares that, that folks use across the state. Um, and we also have an amazing group of teachers and students who are, uh, kind of, uh, leading this charge. Uh, our guidance director, Sally McCarthy, who is the, uh, the Guidance Counselor of the Year, um, is, uh, is kind of one of the heads, heads of that. Uh, Dylan McAllister is on that committee, um, and a number of other teachers and students. Um, and I just want to let you know that Dylan's really running the show here.[276.14][276.14](laughing)
We know.
Yeah, it's, it's really, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Now I'm in the video.
No, no, the video's on the principal.
Oh, good.[289.14][289.14](laughing)
I apologize.
How many students are in the, in the?
For the next couple.
This is a, what grades was this?
This is seven through 12.
And how many students are in this building? Or this campus?
Um, so we have roughly about 350 students, um, with about 40 of them who go to Green Mountain Technical Career Center.
For the full day?
For the full day. So, um, you know, roughly, uh, 310 on campus every day. Um, so just kind of getting back to, uh, some of our ideas around Act 77. Um, so once Dylan takes over, that, we should be, we should be fine.[325.12][325.12](laughing) Um, but, so that's kind of what's happening at the high school level, um, with the, with our advisory time. At the middle school level, we are, uh, we've actually started to pilot, uh, some of these personal learning plans. So our seventh and eighth grade teams, uh, went to the middle grades institute over the summer and, uh, they've piloted this initiative to use Google Classroom, um, and to really have students start developing personal learning plans. So that is a pilot and that's something that we're going to be looking at and really analyzing to, to see what's best practice as, as we move forward. So, uh, lot of exciting things going on. Um, I'm really excited to be here at Hazen and, uh, really work with, with this team and, and with our kids to just make a great learning experience. We have a lot of work to do, um, but, you know, we have the right pieces in place, I think, to really start, start the conversation and go to full implementation and do it right. So, um...
Can I ask a question in regards to Act 77?
Yeah, got it.
Um, what, what kind of communication are, have you got set up or will be having set up to, to inform the parents about what's going on?
So, um, we're, we're looking at, uh, kind of using a community forum avenue or venue so that, um, you know, starting hopefully the second semester this year, we can, we can have a timeline for a schedule of events. Um, and really the seventh and ninth grade being our focus for next year, reaching out to those parents, um, and just really trying to hit social media sites. Uh, you know, we have a Facebook page, we have Twitter, we're doing all that, that type of stuff. Um, but really just trying to get people in the building, um, trying to help them understand what the law says. Um, you know, it's still, I think for a lot of people, it's still kind of, you know, they may have heard of it, but, you know, what does it really mean? You know, so...
Right, right, great.
Could you just talk a little bit more about, um, the advisories here at the school and what's the student-to-teacher ratio? And does that teacher follow the students for all four years or do they switch advisors?
Um, so it's a 90-minute block of time right now. Uh, the first 30 minutes is that advisory model where, uh, teachers and students are building relationships with each other. Um, and then from there, the, the 60 minutes afterwards is a support, support block. Um, so students and teachers can, uh, coordinate who they would like to spend time with. Um, so, you know, if you're having trouble in French, say, you can, you can schedule time with that teacher to go work on French. Um, the plan for, for the four years, um, you know, that was a big conversation last year when we were, when we were, um, starting to implement this. Um, our, our ideas are for a four-year, uh, you spend four years with your advisory. Um, you know, obviously seventh, seventh and eighth grade is a little different. Um, so the seventh and eighth grade students will have a two-year advisory with a middle school teacher and then once they get into high school, um, they'll have four years. Um, and again, even ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th look a little, little different with, you know, planning and, and things like that, but, uh, you really want a point person to be able to, uh, have good conversations with parents and, and students and really have that relationship with, so...
Sean Ray?
I was gonna ask which, which aspects of Act 77 are you focusing on? The, the alternate or the, the pathways piece or the personalized learning plan or just, you're going to review all of it?
Well, we have a pathways program now in the building, um, and so we're using that as a model for, you know, maybe community-based learning opportunities, uh, work-based learning opportunities. Um, how, it'll be interesting to kind of discover how that could apply to a larger group of students because currently we have about maybe 10, 15 students in that pathways program. Um, the personal learning plan, um, idea, you know, again, I said, we have that pilot in the, in the middle school, so that'll be, uh, one piece of evidence that we'll, we'll look at. Um, but, you know, it's new, so it's, it's going to be, you know, really just a learning process for us.
I think we're really, we're doing a lot in each one, not a lot, but we're kind of spreading over all of the pieces a little bit. So we have, like, people at the tech center, we have students at early college, we have lots of students that are online and are taking college classes, and we have the pathways, like, we have kids out in the community in businesses. Like, we're doing a lot of the pieces, it's just bringing it to, like, the, the larger student body.
Stacy?
Um, you'll probably have to give at least four of us, we're at a two-day Ed summit, and I think, at least I'm thinking of all these questions that came up there, so I think we probably have a lot more questions than we normally do. Um, just that one of the things that came up on the summit was how do we, um, remove what might be a stigma between what's traditionally been considered academic versus tech in terms of pathways? And so I'm curious, in the school, how do, does that stigma exist or what do you do to make sure all students feel like all avenues are open to them without feeling like, oh, certain kinds of students do this and certain kinds do that?
Um, well, there's, I don't, I wouldn't think that there's a stigma here. Um, you know, the kids who go to our tech center really enjoy, you know, the programs over there. Um, but as far as, uh, the way that we're going to approach that, um, just kind of those multiple pathways, those flexible pathways, is, is getting away from this traditional idea of school and, and getting credit in this, the Carnegie Unit system, um, and really focusing on proficiencies. Um, so as a district, we've, uh, we've signed up to be part of the PBGR, um, work with the AOE, um, and really just getting students to understand it's about demonstrating proficiencies with certain knowledge and skills that are going to make them successful wherever they're going as far as college and career. So, um, you know, that's going to be, that'll definitely take some legwork on our part, you know, um, especially with, with people who are used to, um, you know, that traditional credit system and, um, and, uh, really getting them to understand the ideas around proficiency-based.
Can I still, sorry, don't, can you, will you, can I ask you to respond from a, if you feel like among students, there's a...
Yeah, so, not to contradict my principle or anything.
Well, just, you may have different perspective.
Yeah. It's on the record, remember, Dylan.
What I do, okay, good. Um, I definitely, I definitely see a stigma, actually. Um, I think it's sort of like, there is a certain kind of student that goes to the tech center right now and it's the person that's not doing well in the classroom. But it might, but it might mean that for that student, their perspective, it's really going to fit them and it's going to be their career, but I think from something like a lot of the other students, it is seen as sort of like, oh, they're going that other way because they didn't make it in, in our system.
Krista?
Um, so could you talk a little bit more about proficiency-based graduation, what work you're doing here at the school to get ready for that? Um, and just where do you see proficiency-based graduation? I know we're working at, at my school, I work at South Burlington and, um...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And, and it's, it's been, it's been hard, even some of staff trying to figure, wrap their head around it and then try and implement it, and just wondering where you are in the process.
Um, so one of our, one of our goals that we created last year, uh, in our, uh, PLC groups, our professional learning community groups, was, was this idea around tier-one instruction. So, um, so the first half of this year, uh, the, our summer of professional development and into our fall as a school, um, we've really focused on modeling and, uh, John Craig and I, as, you know, principals and instructional leaders of the school, have really, um, tried to model what proficiency-based grading looks like. So, uh, most of our faculty meetings over the course of the fall have focused around tier-one instruction and the use of, of rubrics and, and proficiencies. Um, so actually having teachers, you know, develop lesson plans, uh, develop formative assessments, and then actually grading them using rubrics and giving them, uh, you know, timely feedback, um, so that they can start to consider, what does this look like for me in my classroom practices now? Um, so that's kind of some of the professional development side. Um, we have teachers that are actively using, you know, proficiencies, um, in their classrooms now. As a, as a district, we do on-demand writing prompts, uh, two times a year, uh, again, trying, demonstrating proficiencies. Um, and as a school, we're actually having the students go back and conferencing with them about, you know, how they did on their on-demand writing and how they can improve their knowledge and skills and, and things like that. So, um, it's, we're coordinating it. Um, we're definitely not as far along probably as South Burlington or, or big, or big picture, you know, I mean, it's, you know, they've done a lot of work, um, but, you know, it's baby steps.
I think from a student perspective, that I kind of see, um, teachers trying, but I think the culture is going to be a really, really hard shift going from, um, there being, like, no grades, and I think that's going to be a really hard concept for our community. So I think it is going to be some sort of perfect balance of still having some sort of grading system, but there's going to be proficiencies because, like, in the classroom, before a lesson, the teacher's like, "Well, here's your ELO, the Essential Learning Outcome." There's, like, little things like that and grading on rubrics and I have proficiency-based grading in, um, Chorus. So it's like starting to be a thing, but it's, we're not going to get to the point where there's going to be, like, no grades. I don't think that's a, that's a goal.
Thank you very much for your hospitality and your, uh, and your update and how you're approaching Act 77. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I introduce the next person, I want them, for the record, to acknowledge that we are indeed at Dylan McAllister's school. This is where he goes to school and, uh, I wanted to, to acknowledge that earlier. We're also privileged this morning to have the, uh, the local superintendent, Joanne LeBlanc, who is the superintendent of Orleans Southwest, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Good morning. And, uh, I just wanted to extend my welcome to all of you for being in Orleans Southwest and particularly at Hazen Union. Um, we're extremely proud to have Dylan McAllister part of your board. Um, and Mike has certainly elaborated quite a bit around the work that they're doing here at Hazen. Um, I'll just add a couple of pieces to what he's talking about with Act 77. I do know for a fact that, uh, in, I think it's April, that the, there's a student group that is going to be presenting on Act 77 for the entire community. It's a focus forum that's open to all of the community members. Um, part of our work this year has involved trying to be much more transparent with our community members around various aspects of education, um, across the supervisory union. So we've had several, um, we've had two focus forums already. Um, tonight, we're actually going to be talking about the impact of central office and student learning. How are we connected? Um, and we have several going on around different aspects, around special education, um, budget process, anything that's going on. We're trying to educate the community around the work that's being done in our schools. The other thing that I think is really exciting is that, uh, in the past, we've had Community Linkage Committee as a component of the board. Um, it kind of had drifted away and it has now returned, and that group will have, play a major role in being able to educate the community around the major initiatives that are happening in education at this point. Um, and one of the other ones is certainly Act 166 with the preschool legislation that we are currently, um, trying to get our heads wrapped around and be able to move forward. I feel very positive about Orleans Southwest because I think we've always been kind of a leader around preschool education and, and moving that forward and having partnerships and relationships with, uh, a lot of our providers and being able to provide a quality educational preschool program.
How many, um, towns in your supervisory union?
Six.
What are those, six towns?
Uh, they are Crasberry, Greensboro, Hardwick, Standard, Wilkett, and Woodbury.
Any, any discussions going on, um, in relation to voluntary consolidation in those six towns?
Uh, we actually went through the...
I'm sure my fellow board members are shocked I'm asking these questions.[1127.12][1127.12](laughing)
Well, I was going to actually ask, but I didn't want to put superintendent on the spot.
Well, I'm not putting anyone on the spot, I'm just asking, uh, informational...
Well, we act, we actually, um, just disbanded our committee. Our committee, we had a, a merger committee, a voluntary merger committee to have that discussion, and they spent two years doing that research and, uh, last spring, uh, reached a conclusion that, um, we would not be able to move forward at this time to do a merger.
So, uh, the Crasberry Academy, according to our new book, has 90 students, nine, uh, seven through 12. And is there room in this building for 90 students?
For the academy?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah. I mean, that, it's a, the academy is not just one campus, it's a couple of different buildings, but they are able to meet the needs of those 90 students.
Just asking.
Any other questions, um, of Joanne?
Well, yeah, I'm, I come, I'm an SU chair. I come from an SU that has seven elementary schools and a middle school and a high school, and, um, there's a tremendous amount of challenges and, and, and when I say, I didn't want to put you on the spot, I know the challenge of the superintendent or even a, as your chair has to have to balance the, the demand from each of the districts and so forth, but if you had to, if you had to, if you, if, there was something that you could ask this board to help you with in terms of, um, governance, uh, a more seam, seam, a way to, to have things work more seamlessly, how, is there anything that you feel comfortable sharing with us?
Well, you have to understand I'm an interim superintendent and I've only been on the job for about four months, so...
That makes you the perfect person.
You're perfect, that's right.
There's three interims here.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we have, uh, we have quite a few interims in this, uh, in this SU.
So what is, what has been the history of superintendents' turnovers?
In this SU?
In this SU.
Uh, they've been averaging around five years. Um, and it's had, um, I've been in the district previously, I came from this district as the Director of Student Services for 15 years. So, uh, you know, the initial five years I was in the district, we had a superintendent and assistant superintendent. The next five years, we had co-superintendents, and the last five have been a single superintendent with no assistant. So, uh, the model has changed dramatically and we've shifted from your more, uh, I think traditional governance model to a policy governance model, especially...
You are, I was going to ask you, so it is under a policy?
Yes.
Did you find that, coming in as an interim, that that was helpful as opposed to what you experienced before it was a policy governance?
Um, I think there's always pluses and minuses around any model that you do. Um, I do think that there are some pieces of policy governance that make it more efficient and, um, I think it does help you to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the board versus the superintendent and the administration. Um, there are other areas where I think sometimes there's a, there's a need for kind of going a little bit beyond the traditional policy governance model to allow for more dialogue to occur. Um, I think it all depends on, on how you are, um, the relationship between the superintendent and the board.
It's still all about leadership, isn't it?
It's all about leadership.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Smo, curiosity question. Lakeview Union High, Union School District, which is a K through six, who are the members of the union?
Pardon?
Lakeview Union School District.
Yep.
Who are the members, districts of the Union School District?
Of Lakeview Union?
Yeah.
Standard and Greensboro.
Okay, so they got 66 kids between them?
Yes.
Okay, that's unusual to see that at an elementary grade, but there's a few of them around.
Yeah. Yeah, Standard is the only town that doesn't have a school in its community.
Okay.
So they are union with Greensboro for Lakeview and then their secondary students are school choice.
Uh-huh.
I have quite the configuration in this SU.
Yes, you do.
I have, uh, one, one seven through 12, one K through 12, and then five elementaries. And then I have, we reside in four counties, so that, it's interesting for, um, agency partners. Um, our tech center is, we have a regional tech center in Lemoil. Um, and then I have two towns that at the secondary level have school choice.
How many square miles is that?
I couldn't tell you.[1426.56][1426.56](laughing) I haven't really, I haven't really drawn the geographics. It takes from Center, Hardwick is the center of the, uh, of the organization, so it's about 20 minutes to any one of the schools. I can get there in about 20 minutes on a good day.
How would you characterize the relationship between local businesses and the Career Center in this, in this supervisory union?
Um...
Is there, for example, is there any advisory council from the business community at the Career Center?
Yeah, there are local businessmen that attend the Regional Advisory Board for the Tech Center, so we do have some representatives from this community that are on that board. And so they do provide guidance and direction around that. Um, I'm not sure that there is a strong connection from what I've seen. Um, uh, you know, we do have, on this, on this property, we do have the, um, I'm going to blank out now, forestry program that is on this campus that is part of the tech center. Um, so that's, that's the relationship that we have. I'm not sure that there's a, a great connection. Um, I think that we could probably grow in that area, is have more of a connection.
Only speaking personally, not speaking for the board, that's my observation that statewide, there's not much of a connection between the tech centers and the business community. Um, and, and I think that's a real missed opportunity in, in terms of, not only for business, but for, for the students and employment and, and maybe even retaining, uh, Vermonters in Vermont.
Yep.
I'm still thinking of that guy in the bathroom with his shorts on.[1533.12][1533.12](laughing) Thank you very much.
Sure.
I should tell you both that normally we just let the, wherever we are, the superintendent and principal welcome us. We don't usually do this interrogation, so, but we really appreciate what, what information you've, you've given us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Enjoy your day.
Thank you.
One comment if I could. I think from the description of the proficiencies, you may be doing better than you described. You said you're just getting started, but that's, that sounds pretty impressive.
Yes.
We haven't even decided what proficiencies we're using. I mean, that's a, that's the hard part, is, um, do you use estates or do you tweak it? So I think if you have them, that's, that's great.
The next agenda item is, are there members of the public that wish to be heard this morning?
I'm sorry.
Seeing any, we'll move on, um, which also reminds me that, uh, I always forget this, that there's a sign-in sheet over to my right, Perry? So if you haven't signed in, please, please do sign in. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to, um, make a motion to pull the post-secondary school request, uh, green sheet from the consent agenda. And I'd like to make a couple more motions, but...
Well, let me, let's, let's, let's deal with it this way, that, in the discretion of the chair, uh, we will remove the, um, the green sheet from the consent agenda, which leaves just the minutes for a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Krista has seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and we've approved the minutes. Now we'll move on to the, um, to the green sheet. Is there someone from the agency here that's...
No.
Um, I think I have talked...
Rebecca knows I'm going to do this.
Okay, and I, go ahead and go for it.
Do we want to wait for Rebecca to be here?
Sure, but I'll make the first of two motions and I'll save the other one for later. Is, I'd like to table, well, no, I can wait for both of them.
Why don't we, in the, again, in the discretion of the chair, move this further in the agenda when Rebecca is, is in attendance?
Okay.
Rebecca is coming, I'm right about that.
Yes.
Other board announcements?
Many.
Why don't you start, Sean Ray?
Well, I won't do all, I'll, I was part of a number of things, so I'll only do, um, I'll do the standards board. Standards board met last month and they're still working on their strategic plan. They, in the meeting before, um, which I had to leave because they had executive session, they made, um, an exception to a certification for one and denied a request, uh, to, um, waive the praxis for another, and those were both, um, in public minutes. They continue with working on their strategic plan and how they're going to implement the changes they wanted to see from, uh, the NEA and the sort of possible legislative action, which did not happen, and they're still working on how that's going to play out. They do meet on Friday. Um, Krista nor Stacy can attend. I told Steve, Steve and John that I would, uh, send a short report after today's meeting since I knew the meeting would be relatively short. So then I was going to ask, um, Krista if she wanted to report on the... changes they wanted to see from the NEA and the sort of possible legislative action, which did not happen. And they're still working on how that's going to play out. They do meet on Friday. Krista nor Stacy can attend. I told Steve, Steve and John that I would send a short report after today's meeting, since I knew the meeting would be relatively short. So then I was going to ask Krista if she wanted to report on the, the deeper, the promoting deeper learning tour to Boston and Rhode Island in the next couple of weeks.
So it's upcoming, and it's going to be in, say, December first, second, and third in Boston, and going to be touring schools in Boston and in Rhode Island. And these are looking at big picture school in Rhode Island, which is interesting because they're big pictures actually at Tech Center. So talking about the stigma about Tech Centers, that it's a, it's a different model, and it's a Tech Center. And it's, I know that we have a big picture in my school, but that's run as a program within the school. But this is a separate Tech Center program. And there's going to be, looking at another school in Dorchester that is a charter. So it's interesting looking at these schools that sort of are outside the regular model. I am a little worried, just looking at these schools, that these are ones that have gotten exceptions to state rules and standards and have kind of gone a different path. But I think it's interesting to see what can be learned from these different types of, of learning and setting up the educational system. But those will be with other members from around the country, other NASB members.
And the, the organization that's promoting the tour and gathering people from around the country is the American Youth Policy Forum Organization. So it's, the invites were to state members who made education policy. Would that be fair to say? So we can report out in December.
It should be interesting.
I was also at the Vermont, the V SBA conference.
I can report on that.
And Bill and Stacy, Mark and I were at the, the other V, the Vermont. And we'll put the little card up for the Twitter.
There you go. Did you steal that?
I did.
Why don't we save those comments until the agenda item, though, and the green?
No, I am, I'm just saying, I'm done.
Participated in the NASB governmental affairs conference call, which we have on a monthly basis. One thing that's going to get real interesting is with the new, with the elections and the change in the federal Congress, is we expect that No Child Left Behind will be coming up for reauthorization with Lamar Alexander being the chair of the committee. And what's going to happen, of course, you can't say in terms of Washington, but the direction is more authority returned to the state to do their own assessment and accountability kinds of plans. And that would be very consistent and compatible with the directions that we've gone. Again, there's a certain amount of politics and uncertainty that goes with this, but actually, there's some opportunities there that, and we'll just have to see how they unfold. Did enjoy Lake Maury with VSA and V SBA that Sean Marie has mentioned. It's always a good time to visit with those folks. And also attended VSA Leadership Academy and did a presentation for them.
Stacy?
In October, I went to an event put on by Let's Grow Kids, which is the public awareness campaign about early childhood that's going on in Vermont, to see a sneak peek of a video called The Raising of America, that will become a, it's a, we saw a little rough cut of what will be a sixty-minute show shown on PBS in the spring. But it's, it was an event put on at, I think, ten different locations across the state in collaboration with seventeen other Vermont organizations and government agencies, including the A O E. And it really highlighted the growing squeeze on families and caregivers and how that, in terms of money and time and resources. It was a great little rough cut, everything from kind of the neuroscience behind brain development to what kids need to thrive. And I think most importantly and relevant to us, why forty percent of our students are arriving at kindergarten and not ready to learn. And it's pretty disheartening, but hopefully, we're trying to get things right in Vermont with, with all the efforts behind early childhood. But I think especially when we look at EQS and what we're trying to make sure that our schools are implementing, when forty percent of our kids are arriving at kindergarten and not able to kind of start at that baseline, we, we've got a real problem going through the rest of our schools. So thought that was a good video. I think other people should keep an eye out for it when it comes out in the spring. And connected to that, we're going to have someone from Let's Grow Kids come and present to us in December at our next meeting. I think it's good for us to know what's coming in the, the five years before we start to see some of those kids.
Mark?
Yeah. So once again, thanks to, to the folks at the V SBA and the VSA, because they did put on a really good conference once again. V S B A and crew have been busy throughout the fall, working with, I believe it was up to six hundred different board members throughout the state. We've heard, we heard some reporting out on that before. And so when we got together in October at Lake Maury, some of the mega themes that were, were there was education in the twenty-first century. And Bill Daggett spoke about that. It was a really good, a real good talk. It was humorous, it was, it was realistic because he tied in his family and his, his experiences around the world. And then fiscal challenges that, you know, we currently face and that we will be facing. You know, we heard from Jane Feinberg of Full Frame Communications in terms of reframing our challenges and communication. And that's why, when you, you mentioned communication as one of those placards yesterday, I.
Got nailed.
I don't think we appreciate that. And I put you through the grind a little bit with that communication piece in terms of that, we have to reframe the conversation. We have to get communication out in terms of what we're doing and the message. And so that's an important piece. The, there was a, there was a, a video presentation that Nicole Mace interviewed Joe Blanchard, former NEA negotiator. And I, I think that was probably one of the most eye-opening things that I've seen from a board perspective. And essentially, the, the bottom line that I heard him say was, once again, we, the pendulum has really swung the other way now, in that school boards really have to, you know, get themselves organized in terms of being prepared to negotiate with, with a well-organized organization so that we end up with fair and balanced and meaningful master agreements. So that was, that was one of the big takeaways that I, I took.
Thank you.
And Bill was there as well at, at the conference.
The debate, the debate.
I actually left before the debate.
Oh, it was beautiful.
Let's let Bill report on this.
No, Dylan.
Dylan was, Dylan was there, so.
I actually have a couple of things to report on, but like, to see the students share that was really, was really good. They were, apparently, they came from schools that were like state champions, and they were just.
Why don't you explain it a little bit?
I, I think Bill could speak.
It was really quite a beautiful thing, and the kids got a standing ovation from it. And I heard many legislators say, well, first off, is the debate was about school consolidation, pro and con, and they had two teams of two. And the students were incredibly well-prepared and as, and the quality of the discussion and the debate was just outstanding from both sides of the question. And as one legislator said, I wish we had this quality of a debate within the State House on this issue. But they knew the literature, they could express it, they knew the pros and cons. I was impressed. Good instruction and good issue development. What more can I say?
Was it, was it videoed?
So I was going to ask Jeff and Steve, was it, was the, was the debate videotaped?
I'm going to ask Steve.
Yes, the debate was, the debate was, there were some question and answer at the end of it that was equally as enlightening. And unfortunately, a couple of the key sections of the question, question and answer period were cut off, but we do have the debate on.
So can I just, for those of you that may not know about, they were debate teams from schools that had clubs and that they, they debated statewide and maybe even nationally. And so the way the debate works is they, each side had to be well-versed on the topic, and then they flipped a coin to see if you were going to have the pro side or the con side. So you, they both had to, both, both teams had to be thoroughly prepared in the, in the material and then represented. And it's a very, I wouldn't say strict, but maybe, it's a very, it's formatted in such a way that it's actually, you know, timed and then rebuttals and timed and then rebuttals. And if you've ever seen them, they're very, the high school students are pretty, these were, they were pretty well-versed in the topic. And even though at the end, you know, there was no winner or loser, but the ones that represented the not consolidating side said that in reality, they would have supported the consolidating side, as did the students who represented the consolidating side from their student perspective in educational opportunities.
Perry, make sure this quote gets in the minutes, please.
So I.
The paraphrasing of the quote.
I, I would imagine that any legislators that were in fact there might ask to have, I don't know, maybe it would be, I think it would be enlightening for many people who deal with this to see it from the student's perspective.
Steve?
Steve Dale from the School Boards Association. Just wanted to mention that one of the side benefits of the debate was the demonstration of student expertise. I mean, it, it's pretty extraordinary, the process. And also, it was an advertisement for school districts all over Vermont to engage in a formal debate program. Every year, this year it'll be March ninth, in March, they have a, a state, sort of the play downs. It's like the state championships, and teams come from all over the state, and they're looking for judges. This is how we got into this thing last year, by being judges. And it is, it's exhilarating. So, and they would love to have any of you who would like to spend March ninth at the State House observing these processes and judging them. They're, they're always looking for.
That's pretty spectacular. You missed it.
Yes, I did. Dylan, did you have other?
Yes. So we now have a student rep email where you can, where any student or anybody in Vermont that wants to contact any of the student reps on the SBE for any reason, ask any questions or anything, they can now do that. For anybody watching or anybody in the audience, it's sbestudentrep@list.education.state.vermont.us.
Can you say that again slowly?
SBE student rep.
Yep.
Perhaps, I'm, I'm thinking aloud here, but in that you have, you and your associate have that communication that's going to be coming in on a, on a monthly basis. Perhaps we ought to have a regular agenda item where we call on the two of you to give us an update of what you're hearing from students.
I agree.
We hadn't talked about this in advance, right?
We haven't.
But I, I think that would be an important communication. I mean, it's, it's, we're kind of leading the nation here with, with the two student reps, and we ought to take full advantage of it. And I really congratulate you to have taken the lead on this and getting the communication more than just from your own mind, but from other, other students. So I, I think it's, I think it's great. So unless there's objection, we'll put that on the, I have a regular agenda item that recognizes that.
So to add something else that was good that came from this was actually somebody that's from, an advocate in student representation on boards in, in education in Massachusetts has contacted me and wants to put together a state student advisory council, which would be sort of a liaison between the A O E and the board and students, and trying to get lots of student perspective. And then having representatives go out to the community and to talk about issues in their community. So that'd be a council about forty-five, forty to fifty people, students that are going to talk about issues if we get that in place.
Can I just add to that, that Lachlan, who just left the, to his seat here and is at U V M, was working with Harry Frank at the Vermont School Boards Association for that statewide in Vermont. So you might want to connect with Lachlan as well in terms of, and maybe even Harry, because they started something statewide, right?
Are there other board announcements?
I was also at the V SBA, and I did a workshop on student perspective in school governance, and that, that was great.
None of us went because we were, we were hoping you'd report on it.
We just had a conversation about whether there's appropriate representation of students on boards and talking about voting and whether they should or shouldn't be able to vote. And some students, actually, in the consolidated district, there's one between the Vermont and New Hampshire, I forget what it's called.
Riverdale.
Riverdale.
Rivendell.
Maybe it's that one, or maybe it's another one. But I know that they have a student council of forty to fifty people that's actually just within their supervisory union that had, like, makes decisions for the school. So we just talked about, talked about that. And all the, all the stakeholders that were in the group are hopefully brought that out to their communities.
Okay, let's move on. Chair's report. I don't really have much to report, but I've got an item I'd like to bring up. It's come to my attention that the dates that we had set for the board retreat in June, which are June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, are not going to work for Stacy, they're also difficult for Rebecca. I'm a little hesitant to, to propose new dates with Margaret not here, but the twenty-third and twenty-fourth was a Monday and Tuesday, and we're, we're wondering if people would be available on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, which is a Wednesday and a Thursday.
Or Thursday and Friday.
Or Thursday, Friday.
Actually, we're talking June two thousand and fifteen?
Yes. Actually, I'm looking at June two thousand and fourteen.
Me too.
So we're scheduled to, to meet on a Tuesday, Wednesday? In the?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yep. And the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth is proposed, or twenty-four, twenty-five. So Wednesday through, through Friday as opposed to Tuesday through Wednesday, somewhere in there.
And this will be at Twinfield?
No. The location has not been determined yet. It's determined usually by the agency with some guidance from the board chair.
I'm flexible.
I'm flexible, too. Anytime that week means post-school.
So do you prefer Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday?
No preference.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. So I guess we probably actually need a motion to move the scheduled board retreat to June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
So much.
Second.
Been moved by?
Bill.
By Bill, seconded by Sean Marie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And thank you very much. And Perry, would you get that out? Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, right?
Are you shaking your head?
Yes, I'm shaking my head.
You're shaking your head now.
Yeah, the Thursday, Friday works better for Rebecca? Is there any reconsideration of the motion?
I think I just amended my motion.
All right. We're, we're, we didn't vote on the previous motion. We're now voting on moving the board retreat next year in June two thousand and fifteen to the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And that was seconded by Sean Marie?
Not as happily. But yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the, and the motion passes and we move the retreat. And I would, I would ask you, Perry, to get that information out soon to the board members who are not here. If you have any strong feelings of where you want to meet, you know, when we're on a break, don't hesitate to, to talk to me or, or to Perry.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll skip over the secretary's report and move on to item G, NASB dues. I don't know how many years it's been that, that Vermont has been part of the national organization. We've had some conversations in the past about, you know, is it a worthy expense for us? We, when we set the budget, we did budget nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is the, by far, the largest item in the budget. The, the dues are, are due in the near future if we're going to continue to be a member. Between the last meeting and this meeting, we did ask Sean Marie to inquire if the amount could be reduced. And she has gotten word from NASB that the, they're willing to discount, the, the actual bill is nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, and they're, they're, they're willing to discount that by twenty-five percent.
I asked for fifty.
So the question is, I think initially is, do we want to consider, I, I guess the motion, if you want to, if you want to continue to be a member of NASB as a state board of education, we'll assume that we would be paying the less twenty-five percent. If, if there, if it's your wisdom not to continue to be a member, then we probably ought to have a vote to that, to that extent. So it's open for. So it's open for discussion.
No, I just see Stacy with her calculator, so what does that?
Like fifteen.
What is it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Sean Marie?
So, I approached this from the point of view that I had thought that it was very useful personally, when I first got on the board, and then the connection through the, the sort of national information. And Bill, I believe, has taken advantage of it even more than I have in terms of the webinars, and I'm not sure if they get more out of Bill, or Bill gets more out of NASB, but I think going forward, that the national conversation is worth knowing about, in terms of how things are happening around the country for us. I think when I spoke to, I actually spoke to the person in person and then followed up with an email, and I told them that really, it was a financial hardship for us. I sent them a copy of our budget and showed them that the dues were twenty percent of our budget because we were now a standalone, we were not part of, you know, the bigger agency or department. And I thought in my negotiating skills that you always ask for more than you want, so I, instead of just asking if they would discount it and what they could do for us, I asked if they would consider cutting it in half, and then how they would be able to help us as a national organization. So Eric got back to me yesterday and said they were willing to do twenty-five percent of the nineteen, or the, whatever the full number is. And he asked what, he said that you make a good case for the financial challenge, and NASB would like to have you continue as a member. Would a twenty-five percent discount be amenable to the board? It would also be good to get some formal feedback on how NASB can be a more value-added partner for you. So I said we would discuss it today, and I would get back to him. So I was going to ask if Perry could put the PDF of why I belong to NASB and what they offer in our packet next month, and maybe we could talk about what they might be able to do to, to help us.
You're not suggesting that we delay action on whether we continue to be a member?
No, no, I would support being a member of NASB at the discounted rate.
When I get my tax bill from my accountant next spring, I'm going to call Sean Marie and have her send her to the tax department.
I need facts, though.
My motion to accept this would be on the condition that Sean Marie negotiated again with them next year.
Is that a joke, or are you making a motion?
First part was a joke, but I will make the motion.
So Bill has moved that we continue to be a member of NASB for another year at a rate, at a discount of twenty-five percent. Is there a second to that motion? Krista seconds, discussion.
Just one last, no, it's fine.
Stacy?
I think I only feel comfortable with that if somehow, as a group, we can all commit to reading that PDF and finding a way to really utilize the resources. I think I would feel increasingly, having just come out of this discussion of how money is spent, if we're going to go to kind of a nationwide organization and spend that kind of money, then I think we need to all have a commitment to actively seeking out reasons to use them, not just hoping that Bill does it. I mean, I'm speaking largely to myself, I would need to feel like I was going to actually commit to finding a way to get something out of that organization, and not just assume that Bill's watching webinars, because otherwise, that seems like a lot of money.
I share your concern. I've mentioned this before, I did go years ago to the new board member conference, I thought that was terrific, but, and I've read a lot of the material that I've seen over the years, and I'm, it's going to, for me, it's, I'm hard-pressed to see how we can benefit from the organization. How many states have chosen not to be a member of NASB?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's somewhere around thirty-five are members, and another fifteen, something in that category.
I don't, I mean, if, if there are members of the board that are, feel like we're getting something out of it, then I'm more than happy to do it, but it just seems to me that we could spend that fifteen thousand dollars in a, in a more productive way in Vermont.
I have some thoughts, but
I do, too.
Krista?
So, I would hope that we could invite NASB. I know, I've talked to, I've gone to conferences with them before, and they said be willing to come and talk about what they could do to help us, especially with policy research, and that they're willing, if you give them a question, to do that background, and seeing that we don't have anybody that works directly for the board just on policy research, we need to take advantage of that. So I would be in favor of inviting them to come to talk about what they have to offer. I know they've offered to do that in the past, and just to echo what Stacy's saying, I do think we need to take advantage of that more, especially when we were thinking last year, putting in our budget, looking for people to do policy research. If we're already paying this, let's get all that money out of it.
A couple of thoughts on this one, and this follows up on what Krista just said, is policy research and model legislation. They have got some things, and when we get to the legislative agenda, there's privacy sample laws, and twenty-three states have addressed the issue of privacy, and we need to. And we need to address electronic learning, too, and how we approve of those institutions, and we need model legislation for that. If they can provide us with this kind of model legislation, a place to start, I would like to, just from a legislative point of view, is put that in front of some legislators and say, here, adapt this for Vermont, and go with this. So that's one big area that I would see as being important. A second area that I think is very important is how effective will they be in the ESEA reauthorization that may be coming up in the spring? We talked about the Lamar Alexander and his committee, and maybe something happening here. If they're an effective voice, are willing to stand up and talk to these issues, I think they're well worth supporting. If they don't, I would reconsider our membership.
Sean Marie?
I echo what everybody has said around the table. My concern, as a state board member right this minute, is that we are going to be asked to cut. We have also been asked, we have asked to have money put in for policy development attorneys, and we've been, quite frankly, told no. Two years in a row, we said on Steve's recommendation, Stephen's recommendation, that we would not go to the legislature right away to ask for our budget to be amended. I don't think in the climate of cutting that we, we have the, any ability to actually be able to put policy research or attorney fees into our budget. And I fear that if you don't belong to NASB, that fifteen thousand is going to go, poof, and then we're going to be told to rely on the agency, as we have been for the last couple of years. So my concern is holding this as a placeholder and using them to our advantage, because I can assure you that if it is not there, it will not be added to our budget. At least, that's my personal opinion, that we will not be, our budget is not going to go up because we request it. So I, I totally support using them to their fullest and taking advantage of what they have to offer, and will be a voice at the table at the national level as well in this next coming year.
Sure, so we didn't use for fear that we would lose the allocation?
That's not at all what I'm saying.
Okay. Well, maybe I misunderstood.
But it is a fact, that if you, if we do not use this fifteen thousand, I don't know how you're going to leverage to put it in for policy development or attorney fees when we've never used them before.
Okay.
Rebecca?
I just wanted to piggyback, I think it is imperative, if we do do it, that you use NASB well, but as someone who sits on the Council of Chief State School Officers, I'm mindful, when I'm in these national contexts, that Vermont is very, very small in the context of the United States, but that also gives us the capacity to say things that are true, that might move other partners who may not feel that they can move, but that only happens if we're at the table. And so I think that you can create space and push the national agenda, and to the extent that you can recruit other states to echo similar themes, I think you can have a shape on national discourse. To the extent that we're isolated, people tend to discount us because we're only eighty-nine thousand kids, we're not even a big district for most of these states. So if you can use NASB to amplify your voice, but that means being fairly focused about how you use it, it actually could be a powerful platform. But if you don't actually use it that way, then it isn't a good expenditure.
Eighty-nine thousand or seventy-nine thousand?
Whatever, eighty thousand. Equalized pupils is more than real pupils.
Did you find nine thousand students?
No, I'm working on it. Pre-kindhood.
Are we ready for the vote? All right, we, the motion is that we approve the NASB dues at a twenty-five percent discount for the coming year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we have approved that, and we would ask the agency to proceed with payment of that, of our dues at the twenty-five percent discount.
Thank you, Sean Marie, for negotiating that.
Sure.
Yeah, great job, Sean Marie. And again, I think if anybody has any major transaction in their personal life, you might want to turn it over to Sean Marie to negotiate. We'll go back.
I think it also sets a trend, that's a pretty sizable, you know, reduction in our budget.
Absolutely.
Well, and I'm sure we'll more than need it for some of our travel expenses, so it's, it's a good savings.
And if we participate in NASB to a greater degree, that's going to take more travel.
Right, right.
Well, they are paying, I mean, even Sean Marie and I are down in December, it's paid for by NASB, so.
And that's from the other organization, though?
They're good about getting grant monies from organizations, which is a two-edged sword, because those organizations want to push things, but it certainly saves us in terms of expenditure.
So it doesn't cost the state of Vermont to send us at all?
Yeah. So I want to welcome the secretary and, to our November meeting, and call on her for her report for the month.
Thank you. I'm going to start by apologizing. I was too ambitious this morning, I could start the day at the school safety conference and didn't get here in time. So I'm going to hand out a couple of things, but I wanted to start just by saying briefly that we are also suffering some budget cuts, and we will be looking at what cuts we need to make as well, those haven't been finalized, but it is our assessment that we are at the point where there is no micro-trimming of fat that we can do at this point, and we really are looking at what initiatives we need to let go of, and I think our logic is to, to preserve the capacity to enact the ambitious agenda that we have in front of us, and just to start cutting loose things that either aren't in line with that agenda, or to cut loose things that we feel are important and aligned, but that we are addressing more efficiently and effectively through other programs that are already in place.
Can I interrupt you just for a moment on that one issue? And I'm sure you've noted it, that in our, our draft of our legislative agenda, we have taken note of the fact that a great percentage of your budget is federally funded, and that you, the agency, over the last four, five years, has cut a number of people, and in our opinion, you're understaffed. So I just bring that up in response to your statement, in that if there is a way for this board to assist you, I understand that you're in a, kind of in-between, working as a secretary for the governor, but if it's something this board could do to assist with the staffing issues at the agency, please do not hesitate to contact us.
And I'll address some of what we're trying to do in a minute, and it's going to speak to something that Bill just said as well.
You want these passed on?
Yeah, pass those on, there's extras for people in the audience if they want them as well. I wanted to just catch you up on a few things that have happened on the national stage that relate to Vermont and Vermont's interests, and one of them, some of you have already picked up, which is that recently, the SBAC, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, states voted on standard setting, and that was a conversation that came up in the context of our state board policy or statement on assessment. And what I'm handing out is a letter that we sent out at the beginning of November, prior to an initial meeting of this governing board, to really express some of our concerns around the standard-setting process. And as you know, I'll give you the nutshell review, we're required to report our students' performance in terms of these standards under No Child Left Behind. So we are compelled to do this, but at the agency, and I think certainly the state board, has some serious concerns about this as a method of reporting scores. And so what we did is, prior to the initial standard-setting conversation, we did send out a letter, and actually Frank Girdeman, who represented the agency at that initial meeting, shared this letter there. And, you know, our concerns, our goal was to lay out on the table some of the concerns we felt the agency, and I think they're all concerns that have been echoed powerfully. We also shared the board's statement on assessment with many of the, the members at the table, to really, you know, highlight the fact that, first of all, this is a terrible way to report scores. It can provide a very distorted view of what's going on. A challenge we know in the tests is that they're grade-level tests, so it may not even capture the tremendous work that's done by schools, particularly high-poverty schools or schools that serve a lot of students who are initially lower-performing, they may achieve tremendous gains, and that will never really be picked up if this is how you're reporting scores. So it has the, and particularly when the thresholds are set very high, and indeed that is where this has been done, it basically has the effect of failing large numbers of students and then indirectly schools, and I think really eroding faith in public education, and really demeaning some of the work that is being done to try to improve the learning of all these, these children. And then, so you can see the letter, and I think you'll see, you can read it at your leisure, I think it exercises, reflects some of the concerns that came up in the state board discussions. At that meeting, which became fairly heated, the, there was a decision to suspend the final vote until the CCSSO Council of Chief State School Officers meeting last week, so we met Friday night last week to reconvene and finish the conversation. And in the interim, worked hard, and what we found is that there are several states that really share this concern, most notably California, which has been very powerful to us. And this is, I mention this just to remind you that there are others in other states who share some of these concerns. When California speaks, people listen, even if they don't listen when Vermont does. So it's something to think about as you think about how to use NASB. And actually, also, New Hampshire also had some concerns about this approach. So at the recent meeting, they did, you know, we did have another vote to approve the standards, both New Hampshire and Vermont chose to abstain because we didn't want to endorse this process, even though we're compelled to, to follow it for No Child Left Behind. But I think it was a positive step forward in that the, the group did vote on, prior to taking a vote in the standard setting, and I realize that we need to send it to you, I may not have had a chance to send it to you yet, but a statement that basically says that these scores and these standards, that they're not, they're only one way to report scores, they're not a very good way of reporting scores, which is one of the points we've made, that they're not predictive of life outcomes. And I think particularly in an era where we're incredibly committed in Vermont to moving all students towards post-secondary opportunities, and not just the twenty-five, thirty percent of what was gone, we feel a very strong commitment to not labeling kids college-ready and not college-ready, and to not differentiating between college-ready and career-ready, because we feel that the children who are going into careers and not four-year programs still need high levels of skill. We don't want to set up that tiered tracking system with different levels of expectations for some kids and others. We want to educate all our children well, so that they have choices down the road, and they can choose to go where they want. So, you know, it's really important to us to not sort of start messaging really early on to kids that you're not college material, because we know that if you move into a school and you come from another place and you speak another language, you won't do well in the test, but that's in no way predictive of where you're going to go in life. And likewise, you may come to school and, you know, if you're speaking with a foster child who'd been through fourteen different schools, you may take longer to get there, but just because it took you longer to get there didn't mean that you can do those things. So we need to be so careful about labeling. And I think having the governing board vote on this common statement that said these aren't predictive was very powerful, in terms of saying that, that we don't see this as a sort of a life sentence if you score at a certain level on Smarter Balanced. And then the other piece that really came out of that conversation, and out of parallel conversations in CCSSO, is that we really do value, and we were able to say very strongly, we value a much broader vision of education than what's captured on these standardized tests. And got a fair amount of support, less so at the public table, but certainly behind the scenes, lots of people coming up and saying, thank you, thank you, thank you for saying that, because we are educating our children not just to do well on tests, but to be well-rounded and thrive across a whole range of outcomes, and, you know, and it's, you know, it's the post-secondary access, it's the opportunities to learn at the beginning when they go into pre-K, and looking at, you know, their ability to function in scientific inquiry in communities, to be creative and innovative, these are all things we care about. And I think there is a new, you know, there's still a lot that's sort of frustrating about the national agenda, but just to pick up on some themes that Bill mentioned, the tide is turning, and so we really have a window here and a moment where, if we really care about these things, we can try to shape the conversation in a powerful way. I think there is growing consensus that the narrowness of educational goals as defined in these tests is perhaps destructive and perhaps erodes is perhaps destructive and perhaps erodes civil rights in that some children don't have access to that breadth and rich curriculum because we're so narrowly focused on just literacy and math. I do get the sense that ESEA, Reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, which has been on, you know, on the back burner for years. I have a sense it may actually move fairly quickly in the next two years, for better for worse. And I think part of it is to to be at the table so we can advocate for a broader vision and also acknowledge that some of what we care about is very difficult to capture in standardized tests, so we need to think about accountability in much broader terms than just how we've done on two standardized tests, which isn't to say that tests aren't useful when used well, but they certainly don't capture the breadth and and depth of what our teachers are doing in schools. And we don't want to reduce that work to just those two measures. So that seemed very positive. I did have a chance to ask Secretary Duncan a little bit about how we handle the small end. I mean, one of the persistent challenges we have in Vermont is that if we reported scores the way Massachusetts does, eighty percent of our schools wouldn't get disaggregated data. And that's not on the table. He's still focused on, I don't know that he understands the challenge of rural districts and that our circumstances really are unique, and the one-size-fits-all policies that come out of Washington just don't fit Vermont. It's not that we don't care about kids. It's just that the way we're being asked to evaluate them doesn't, and evaluate our schools isn't working. And so I don't see that changing, but I do see that that there's been movement in the Council of Chief State School Officers, which is a very powerful lobbying institution, in terms of understanding that this model doesn't work and that the waivers don't work for states like Vermont. And I've actually had that said to me now, whereas when I went back in January, there was no acknowledgement of that. So I do think there has been tremendous movement. And CCSSO was actually saying that they would be pushing back on some of the waiver processes, which is a huge shift in their, and then the last piece of that, in terms of finding, when we talk about secretaries' reviews, I think Vermont is committed in the education quality standards to a different mode of looking at professional accountability and school quality that's a little bit broader. It is a more expensive model, because it's very easy to go into a school, administer a test, and analyze the data and just take that number. To give our schools and the work that is being done on our schools credit and full, you know, acknowledgement of the the richness and complexity of it, and to do a secretary's review is a much more time-consuming, staff-intensive process. So it is, it is labor-intensive and cost-intensive. And so one of the things we'll have to think about moving forward is how we how we afford that in a climate of scarce resources. And one of the things that we're working with the CCSSO and their Innovation Lab Network is to push for support for some pilots of inspectorate models as alternative accountability model. And we're hoping we can leverage some some funding through them, probably with California as a partner, to try to develop some some alternative models for accountability that would involve the kind of school quality review process that we've we've thought about. And I'm assuming that will go forward. We are sending some initial proposals out to California for review and then to to CCSSO to see if they can help approach some of the funders for us, and I hope that will be positive. But on that, I I don't want a decision today, but I want the board to consider at some point, and just start weighing in your mind, what the appropriate unit for us to interact with the field around is with respect to school quality reviews. And when you think about the fact that curriculum and instruction has been moved to the SU level, when you think about the fact that special education support services for learning have all been moved to the SU level, it it, and when you think about our capacity to interact with three-hundred-and-something units as opposed to sixty-something units, and if our goal is on continuous improvement, it may be that what we want to think about is whether we're focused on continuous improvement at the school level or even if we're using surveys and qualitative observations, it's still unreliable data, whether we want to think sort of at the SU level in terms of systems and what systems and what, how are we targeting resources to encourage teachers to move across schools, to learn from their colleagues in different buildings within SUs, to support SU-level continuous improvement. So something to think about as we move forward as well. So I think that was the bulk of what I had to share today. Perry, did I forget anything important? Okay, thanks.
Any questions for the secretary? We will move back to Royal University.
Uh, Bill, or Stephen?
I'm happy, Michael.
I am.
Let's let's hear the position from the agency first, and then then we'll get into questions and comments.
Well, just let's tell Rebecca that we made a formal motion.
She's, no, there's. To pull it off the consent agenda.
I'm fine. I think there's a number of issues here that we have to talk about. I think the the, a problem we have, and I think you alluded to it, is this is a rapidly evolving field with no guidelines, no contemplation of the rules, and no standards. And it's going to keep coming up, and it may be that what we need to sit down and do is talk about what what a process of approval looks like for these kinds of institutions before we go ahead.
That would be my thought as well, is we're going into new territory here, and the precedents we set could come back and haunt us sometime later on. And since we have reciprocity with other states on this, if somebody says Vermont approved, and then it turns out to be not too good a place, then Vermont is on the hook for things, and we could face potential legal action here. And one thing, when we get to the legislative agenda, and this is where we need to get some model policies on these things, is virtual schools are the wild, wild west at this point in time. And I'd like to hold back on that until we get some kind of legislative structure or state board rule structure that controls it before it just gets out of control.
Well, we ought to, we ought to be clear on what what I hear you saying, and I've heard other board members say, is that we need some some guidelines.
Yes.
Now, whether it's legislation or 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 state board rules, as you know, the state board rules is about an eight-month process. And if that's, if we're going to approach it that way, we ought to ask, we can't demand, ask the agency to come back to us in a reasonable time with a with a proposed set of rules and start that that rulemaking process.
So what I would like to do is I would like to make a motion to request that we start the rule review of twenty-two forty, which is the certification of post-secondary schools, and that particular rule, which does not include virtual post-secondary schools, as a way to start this process. It also ties to our strategic plan goal two, which we may get to later, and that the goal two is ensure the public education system is stable, efficient, and responsive to ever-changing population needs, economic and 21st century issues. And under this requires examination and work in a number of areas. The first bullet is rules. Review the State Board of Education manual on rules and practices and the rulemaking process to assure responsiveness to contemporary needs. So I personally think that approving a motion to start the review of twenty-two forty fits very nicely in the contemporary needs and in the goal for the state board. In terms of technically, I did read the rules pretty thoroughly, and there are some timelines to give to the the applicat-the app-the applicant. And so I don't, I guess we'd, I I would refer to the agency and their legal team, et cetera, on how to handle it, because I'm not making the motion to table, but I would also wonder how we deal with that particular green sheet.
Well, I think you've made a motion, and as I understand it, to review rule, rule twenty-two forty-three and.
Twenty-two forty. It's the whole section.
Okay. And and make sure it includes online education policy issues.
Correct.
So a second to that motion. Krista's second it. And then then I would suggest, if we take action on this, then we need to take some action on the green sheet. This is on our agendas before us, but not not to complicate this particular motion. Are there, is there discussion on this motion? Do you all understand the motion?
Are we talking about just post-secondary institutions or both?
We're reviewing all of twenty-two forty.
All of twenty-two forty, which would be.
It's thirteen pages. It does not include independent schools. It only includes post-secondary.
Okay. I'd like it to be broader, but.
Not hearing an amendment and and going to the motion, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Sean Marie's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we would ask the agency to initiate a review of rule twenty-two forty, and we're moving along. What is the board's wishes on the sheet that's before us on the Royal University?
Well, what are our options?
I think your options are, if you're if you're waiting on the review, that that you need to table action on on this particular presentation.
And if we vote no, what would that mean?
They don't, they don't have.
Oh, then if you.
Vote to deny.
Then if you vote to deny, then it then it goes away.
You could also, at a subsequent meeting, you could ask representatives to come and speak here.
Could we deny it and say that we, I guess we can't say we don't have enough information on policy? I mean, because they they followed the rules, I'm assuming.
Yes.
As, except there is one piece kind of missing, but.
I tell you what, why don't we take a a short break? And maybe you could come to a conclusion on how you want to proceed with this.
Okay.
It's been a little controversial recently, but you heard the students, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 I.
Okay, I will call the State Board of Education meeting back to order. We are still on the the green sheet from Royal University, and it's under discussion. Is there any further discussion or is there any proposed action?
I'd like to make a motion to.
We're back in order.
I'd like to make a motion to table the, to table the certificate of approval for Royal LLP. Send it back to the Agency of Education for additional review with regard to rule two-two-four-oh.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second and by mark. Now, just to remind you, a motion to table is non-debatable. And what this will mean, if this motion passes, is that this table motion will remain on the agenda until a motion to take it off the table is successfully approved. So the motion is to table action on Royal University and ask the agency for additional review under rule twenty-two forty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion to table has successfully passed. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda H, the strategic plan, which is up for discussion and and approval today. Unfortunately, Bonnie is not here, who chairs the committee.
Nor Margaret.
Nor Margaret, but I will remind you that what we intended to do at the October meeting was to take a a vote on our proposed strategic plan. And just to remind you that every five years, the board, under statutory obligation, requires us to come up with a new strategic plan. So our intention today was to to vote on this proposed draft and then ask the agency to circulate it publicly, allow some public comment on it in at the December meeting, and then to take a final vote on it at in December. Krista.
So my only concern, we're going through on the second page under staffing. I'd sent out a website to people, I found a report, there's a twenty-fourteen teacher and staff survey report. And so when we look at here, it says that, let's see, let's see.
Generous compliment?
Well, and it's that we don't understand the staffing pattern and that the agency's underway. We do not have a clear picture of how our staffing ratio. There actually, if you go online, this teaching staff survey report, it goes from twenty-fourteen all the way back to twenty-oh-three, and it talks about staffing. It talks about different categories, talks about the actual one-through-K teachers, seven-through-twelve, aides, special ed. It goes through lots of different subtotals. So I just don't think that if we put in staffing, there is information. I don't sure if that's an accurate statement, saying that we don't have a picture. We haven't looked at it, and I think that's something we need to dive into. The one thing is, I know online, it goes to two thousand and seven, and everything before two thousand and seven, the hyperlinks are broken. But before that, it it really is a clear picture. It breaks it down by district, breaks it down by gender, what people make, looking at staffing ratios. And I was really surprised, just looking at that, that the teachings to, or direct instruction in adults have stayed around sixty-eight percent, but that sixty-eight percent within that has changed quite a bit, where the money is going with heavier towards special ed and aides and less away from actual one-through-twelve classroom teachers. So I thought that was fascinating, so I feel like the data is there. So I don't know if it's a correct statement, saying that, you know, we don't really have a clear picture of ratios.
So we haven't, there's no motion on the table right now, but you're you're suggesting that one sentence ought to be removed while some agency studies? Or are you suggesting that that whole section needs to be redrafted?
I think it needs to be reworked, just, I was surprised when I found that report. I found it by accident. I was looking for something else. And then you go on the agency website, and they're all there from two thousand and seven, and it says it's there to two thousand and three, but the links don't work. So there is a really clear picture of staffing ratios. I mean, I think it's something that we need to look at and analyze. So I'm not sure if it's a correct statement, saying that we don't have data, because the data is there. We haven't talked about it as a board. That's more of a correct.
Well, as I'm quickly rereading it, to your point.
Yeah.
It seems to me if you remove that sentence, it would would.
Which sentence?
While some agency's are underway, we do not have a clear picture?
Yes, yeah.
I think the rest of it is is.
Right, but I think just that made it a not a very accurate statement.
Or 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 some reference to what you're referring to.
Right, the teacher-staff survey report.
I'm eager to to get this, keep this process moving, so I'm eager to get a vote today. And and maybe there's a way that we could structure our motion so that this could be redrafted, but for the December meeting. But I'm eager to keep the process moving, but I may be in the minority. Stacy.
In terms of how some of these paragraphs were created, I think, Krista, you're picking up on some differences in opinions among the drafters about what the data meant. And I think some of the fuzzy language was a result of trying to accommodate different opinions. So I think you're right to call out that it's not accurate. So I think however we redraft it, we should make sure that it's, that the, how do I say, that the strategic goal, right, is to analyze the data, not to interpret within the strategic plan what the data already says, because I think there was, there were definitely some different. I think there were, there was stronger language before, and I think now the language is fuzzier. I think you're right to clear that up.
Another possibility, I suppose, is that in that today is a preliminary approval, assuming there are votes to do that, which would allow opportunity at the December meeting for individual board members or the strategic planning committee to come back with 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 some amendments.
But I agree with Krista's point, for sure.
Well, I mean, and and again, the option is, once there's a motion on the table to approve this, you could amend that motion and take this one sentence out, if that addresses your concern.
I'd just like, Rebecca.
I go back to the why. I mean, I think we may know more about how. We may not know all the whys, just to give you another example. One of the things that we know is due to a change in the benefits package for retirees. We know that there's a number of teachers who have with, put off retirement until they get spousal benefits, so that we anticipate big retirements. I think a role the board could play is figuring out what information is critical and how to share it. So if we talk about reducing staffing, there's an opportunity there to do it in a way through planned retirements that has minimum disruption on districts. And so there, there, what we don't have is is a body that's really looking thoughtfully at what we do know, pulling out the patterns and talking about how to use them proactively in a policy way. So if we think about the why, I think the board could, and one of the things that we committed to early on was for each of these areas, spending some time just looking at the data and pulling out the policy implications of it. And if we remember that when we vote on this, maybe it matters less what the wording here is, rather than we still have that commitment to taking the time to understand the data and figure out what the positive policy implications are moving forward. I don't know if that was, made sense.
Well, it would. I would like to spend some quality time at this table, just going over the whys and the wherefores and digging into that stuff, and I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, because the session's going to be on us, and this is going to be a very big issue.
Right.
Is there a motion on the proposed strategic plan?
Preliminary approval for.
Preliminary approval with final approval coming at the December meeting with public distribution in the meantime.
Can we postpone the final vote till January if need be?
Well, the majority rules this board.
So, I make...
Despite what the chairman may think or want.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept these draft, this draft strategic plan, and I would ask that when it's distributed, there be a watermark that says "draft" on it?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the draft of the proposed strategic plan for the next five years. Any other...
Is there a second? Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Oh, Mark, sorry.
Mark seconded it. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion has been adopted. One thing that I would, before we leave this agenda item, going back to the fact that we're a policymaking organization now, I think, if not today, but certainly in, at December meeting, we ought to come up with a process where, on a monthly basis, we somehow deal with the strategic plan. It's a monthly agenda item, not the whole plan, obviously, but, you know, a different section of it, perhaps, where we have a thoughtful discussion, and maybe a conclusion of some direction we want to move. Stacy?
I agree with that, I was just gonna say, when I invited Robin Friedner-McGuire from Let's Go Kids, come talk to us, and I was trying to think how to best, I'm sure there was a connection, but how to best tie it in...
How to frame it.
Right, how to frame it, what I realized was, oh, we should obviously go to the strategic plan, we have two goals, they're broad, but they're very, they're very kind of intentional, it's very clear that the efforts in early childhood education very clearly go with equity in Goal One. And so, maybe when we do have people come and present, just to make sure that they use our, you know, we help them, or they use our strategic plan to do what you're saying, so every month, we are very directed and focused in terms of why we're getting the information we're getting.
Krista?
And just to add to that, I'm hoping, even at next meeting, we could talk about the Teacher Staff Survey Reports that are already out there, and start continuing that work, if that's part of our strategic plan, and looking at staffing, and it's a hot issue coming up to legislative session, and making sure we get those reports, that the hyperlinks aren't working, and be able to dive through that data.
The reason the hyperlinks aren't working is, I think, after a certain point, it starts being archived and taken off the site. So, it's part of an age...
Oh, okay.
It's how old the data is, we have the data, it's just that we only keep the most recent five years, or something, on the website.
Okay, because it's on there, and you click on it, and it just says that if you can't see this, contact us and let us know.
Right, and so, it's there, but we're just, if the weight isn't, we have it internally, we can get it to you. So, it's not that we, I think the question is, if the board could be focused about what the questions are it wants answered, we can help pull together the data in a form that's comprehensible.
Okay.
So, if time allows, Perry, let's put what Krista's suggestion on the December agenda, but after we've taken final action on the strategic plan. And if there are suggestions for changes in the strategic plan, I would ask board members to come prepared with amendments at the next meeting, perhaps you might even share them in advance, because if we can possibly wrap this up in December, I think that would be productive. We're approaching lunch, and we're got a pretty big discussion item after lunch, so I'm not going to move on with the agenda, but if you've noted since the break, that Perry has passed out the vouchers, and I would just remind members, I think Perry has tried to put on the vouchers, whether you attended the VSBA, the SA conference or not, as well as the Green Mountain imperative, so if it is on there, that's great, but if you attended either of those events, and other events, please make sure you add it to your personal voucher.
And Perry would appreciate filling out one form, right, rather than 20?
Yes, yes.
That's your goal here.
We're getting all on this one voucher. And a reminder, that under the current statute, I remember dinner, you can assess $15, am I correct there?
If you have the receipt.
And do you remember what lunch is? All right.
Three.
You might, if...
We give out popcorn and diet soda.
If you wish, and you want that, you need to include that on this as well, and, but you'll need receipts for your, any hotel stays, and any meals. So, with that, we will recess until 1:00 PM, subject to maybe an earlier start, if it's convenient. Okay?
Please be just like...
We are on Agenda Item Number I, and discussion of the board's legislative agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Bill, to give us an update of where we are. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. You have the material in your packets, and it's labeled there as Draft 4, November the 4th, 2014. Actually, the only changes to this, from what we worked at as a committee of the whole last month, was I took your recommendations, and changed the words, and streamlined it some, and brought out the bullet points, as you all had recommended, and there's not a whole lot that's new here. I think that some of the phrasing is better, as a result of working on it, and so, that's it. I'd be open to, now is the time for any discussion on any particular item, or any kinds of tweaking on it.
Well, let me ask, let me start off by asking you a question.
Sure.
The first sentence, "The Vermont State Board of Education calls for limited legislative action," which I fully understand, fully agree with, fully appreciate. However, looking at the climate, it looks like we may, and when I say we, I mean the state of Vermont, finally be interested in looking at educational funding, and maybe a school governance structure. And, I mean, I think we're way behind schedule on that, but I'm not sure if we really do take that up, if that's a limited legislative agenda.
Well, you're right.
I understand what you're saying, is that new thinking, new ideas, new assessments, et cetera, we're saying we're not, this is not the year to be doing any of that.
Well, it's, I think that's correct. As you'll notice, the bold heading at the bottom of the first page, which is the major item, is enhancing fiscal efficiency, and we do talk very briefly in here somewhere about organizational kinds of things, but, and it's actually a sub-bullet under enhancing fiscal efficiency.
Right.
So, I think that everything that we've heard in the last couple of days, everything that's lining up, is that we're going to be looking at, money's going to overwhelm the agenda, there's no doubt about that. And that's why I'm thinking that we need to really establish our cost principles that we want to stand for, which are in italics, because they're the important piece, and that would be the position that we would take on the various proposals that are coming. But to think that's not going to be coming around the bend, and it's not going to have any other implications, that would be wrong, it's going to have a huge amount of implications.
But I'm just wondering if that lead sentence sends a different message?
Well, we can, we can edit this, we can play with it. Krista?
Just in light of everything, that's, the conversation's been changing even over the last month, is it that we want limited legislative action that is directly impacting schools and unfinished mandates, but we do see that the, looking at funding is necessary? So, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to get at, limited action, we already have EQS, we have a lot of implementation going on within the schools, but maybe open to looking at the funding of schools. So, maybe it just words, maybe change the wording, and limited new initiatives that impact schools, maybe, but to explore the...
I think Perry would like to have a bunch of new initiatives with the staffing she's got there, I say very tongue-in-cheek.
I'd rather focus on doing well, what we already have on our plate.
Right, yes.
And I think my concern is that we, we have several big initiatives, heavy lifts for districts, some coming out of the state board, some coming out of legislature, and, you know, there are administrators in the office, but in the room, but I want to make sure they have the time to do this well, and not be too burdened, so.
Maybe it's a rebuilding year for schools, to give them time to absorb all these new initiatives, but at the state level, to consider funding and governance.
If you'll look, the reason I brought out that first sentence was make a very strong declarative thing, and then the very immediately following paragraph goes into these particular points, is that we've got to digest what we've already got, we don't need a new equivalent to preschool education, we don't need a new initiative in terms of dual enrollments, or anything like that.
Okay, well, you know, maybe the next paragraph does make it clear, but it just, it just struck me, as I was rereading it yesterday, that, man, what I've been reading about, you know, are two major things, it's not, it's not limited.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to qualify, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Do you want to qualify the purpose, limited legislative action that doesn't, that adds costs without increasing efficiency, or something like that?
Well, I was busy sort of putting a comma there after 2015, in terms of defining that a little bit further, and I'd be amenable to that.
Okay, all right, why don't we leave that in particular? Other comments, suggestions from the board? Any comments from the public? Yes?
Ken Page from our Principal's Association, and I'm particularly curious about the last bullet, which is determining the proper role of advertising in schools, and curious about how that got there, in light of the looking at money. Schools depend on local advertising as a revenue source, you know, at basketball games, and at, you know, picture contests and others, and, not that it's not the state board's purview to say how people should handle advertising, but I guess I want you to think that there's implications for sports, sports teams, and others, when you take on that didactic role, which is, we're going to tell you what the proper role of advertising in schools are. I would say, for the most part, I don't see Coke scoreboards anymore, and Coke, so I think there's real value in sort of promoting healthy lifestyles, but I also want you to think that there is, if this results in a loss of revenue at the local level, that's the little extra monies that they need to do, the little things they do in schools, that there's no other money in the budget for. So, I just want to point that out, because, and I know it's important to the local community to contribute to the school in that way, and so, it works both ways, so I want you to think about that, that's all.
That's why the language is determining the proper role. The last thing that I think we want to get into is telling the local hardware store they can't have their sign on the, on the baseball field, particularly since they paid for it. But somebody was giving the example of, you want to go for it, Krista?
Yeah, sure, so, I was giving a test online, is our online management system, and all of a sudden, ads start popping up for kids, when they're taking tests. So, I'm giving them a test and assessment, and then they're getting these online ads for cellular phone, I mean, that's what, so, looking at that, and seeing, because then it became a distraction for students, when they're trying to take a test, and these things are flashing up. So, just, and it was just a little inappropriate, too, and you don't know what's coming in, and this was on a learning management system that the school was paying for, and we were then receiving ads. So, just looking at what is that role, and especially with online and cyber, especially now that we're leaning more towards computers.
Jeff?
Jeff Francis from our Principal's Association. First, to follow up Ken's comment, and it's one that I hadn't given too much thought to, but the exchange causes me to give a little bit more. I think that the state board should give some consideration to whether it can address that issue of advertising, if it's inclined to address that issue of advertising, in a manner other than the General Assembly. And the reason is because I understand how the lobbying process works, so the minute you start to address that issue, it's likely that you might inspire unintended consequences of folks that have a, may not have much of an interest in that issue today, but would gain an interest because they utilize online advertising. So, I've seen for-profit entities actually bring more pressure to bear on an issue like this one than anybody could anticipate. So, that's, I'm not predicting that, I'm just saying that it's something that you ought to be aware of. I would bet that if you circulated this among some in-state and out-of-state lobbying firms, there'd be some clients generated just on the basis of this presentation. So, that's just something to keep in mind. Anybody want to ask a clarifying question on that? Or do you get my point? The other thing that I would say is that I wanted you to consider the reconciliation of your role as a policy board with the General Assembly's role as a lawmaking entity, the legislative body of government, particularly with regard to the second full paragraph on the first page. I was having a hard time reconciling the reference to initiatives, and didn't know whether that went to focus in the first sentence, or first line, or to programs in the second line. In other words...
Would you read what you're talking about?
Sure. So, you say, "The State Board of Education recommends that the main legislative focus should be on enhancing the capability of the state and districts to successfully implement these new programs, and to address vital educational and social needs. These initiatives include enhancing fiscal efficiency, comprehensively reviewing staffing compliments, and closing the achievement and opportunity gap." And I didn't know, I, perhaps I didn't read it carefully enough, but I didn't know whether you were encouraging the General Assembly to steer clear of those three important initiatives, because sufficient work had been done, or whether you were inviting them to continue their work in those areas? I couldn't tell that.
Thank you, that's an ambiguous referent, and the referent is to the preceding paragraph, not the below things, but it does need to be made clear.
Okay, so I, so, that's what I thought, and I actually appreciate that, because I think that, in my experience, including coming out of the last two days of the education summit, that the state of Vermont and the state board is absolutely on the right course with respect to closing the achievement and opportunity gap. And I think with Act 166, and Act 77, you are absolutely in the right direction, including with education quality standards and the work that's happening at the AOE. With regard to enhancing fiscal efficiency and comprehensively reviewing staffing compliments, I had a concern about the fourth bullet on the second page, which is consolidation and governance, and here's my reason. I think that as a policy entity, and this goes back to your strategic plan discussion this morning, the state board has a lot to offer with regard to both measures of efficiency and staffing, and I am concerned that history does not bear out the assertion that locally tailored solutions will prove more appropriate and acceptable. And I know that there's a balance that needs to be struck here, because you do not want to be overbearing or heavy-handed, as either a state board or a General Assembly, but I think that our experience of relying on locally tailored solutions to address issues of efficiency and staffing has not, in general, been acceptable, or successful. It may have been acceptable, but not successful. And I think that the conversation that we saw over the last two days, where there was a heavy emphasis on what the organization of the delivery system is, and a heavy emphasis on whether we are as efficient as we can be, really begs more involvement by the state board, and perhaps by the General Assembly. And I also think that irrespective of what this document says, the General Assembly is going to go there, based on what I've witnessed in the political environment over just the last couple of months. So, I don't have a specific recommendation with regard, with respect to the proposal per se, but I think that the state board should, consistent with your strategic plan discussions this morning, be heavily in the districts with their own efficiency determinations, and their own optimizing staffing determinations. So, I don't know how you reconcile that, I could try to respond to any questions, but I didn't want to let the moment pass without conveying those thoughts.
Well, I must admit, when I reread this yesterday, and knowing that there's... Well, I must admit, when I reread this yesterday, and knowing that there's differences of opinion on this board, on this, on the consolidation and governance issues, I wondered, I mean, my first note was, this is weak, and my, and it appeared to be a, maybe a compromise of the members of the legislative committee, given that I know the differences. But I don't, from what I'm reading and hearing, I don't know that it really reflects what's probably going to happen this year. You know, my point of view is that there's been, what, two, three, four years of legislation that have tried to initiate this whole process on a local basis, on a voluntary basis, and what have we got? Two school districts that have actually moved ahead in this, which hasn't had any effect. So I question the wording of this, too, but knowing that there's differences of opinion in the, on this board. Krista?
I guess the question maybe, and we could talk about this as a board, is that we received news from the governor when Ally reported out to us about the direction where we want to go, and I think that's where more of that compromise came from. And if we want different language, I think that's something the whole board would have to really agree to. And I don't think we felt comfortable in the committee doing that without the full board, because we, the governor had come to ask, and to ask that it was more of a ground-up approach.
Recall, that was exactly the circumstances when we drafted that language, is the governor was saying that we need to do incentives and encouragement kinds of things. How this is going to change during the legislative session, I don't know. I think it's going to be there, and I think that the legislature, one way or the other, is going to deal with this issue. And whether a top-down thing would work better than a bottom-up thing, well, I just don't know, one way or the other. I think that there is a different climate right now than what we've ever seen in previous years. And maybe it was necessary to take those other three or four preceding years' worth of trial, trouble, tribulation, and so forth, to get where we are. And the secretary has been going around with her presentations and doing the arithmetic with these people, and I think that maybe there is an opportunity to capitalize on all of the energy that's out there that we have never had before. And if that would happen, that would be great. There's the other thing, is the existing statute says that the state board can reconfigure a period. And there may become a time, a couple of years hence, in which that may be the path that would be indicated at that point. But I would like to see if something bears fruit here, but...
I would just be thoughtful about the fact that letter was written in June or July last year, and we recently had a...
The letter?
From the governor to the secretary. Wasn't written to the state board, and that happened, I think, pre-election, and I think what we've heard is that there's a very strong interest in the state to address property taxes.
In fact, during the campaign, I was, maybe I was misreading it, but I read a lot of the things that the governor said about schools, is that he seemed to have moved, I'm not speaking for the governor, obviously, but the way I read that is that he seemed to be moving more in the direction that we needed to do something pretty soon about the governance structure of our school system. That it was not only providing equal education for all students, but, and secondarily, there might be some financial benefits to changing that governance structure. That's what I heard during the campaign.
Go ahead.
And, you know, you mentioned at one point, I forget which of the documents it's in, it's a sort of a fiscal report card, an indicators thing.
Yeah.
You know, and we've talked about school quality reviews, and one of the issues that kept coming up in the session yesterday were indicators, sort of target indicators that are benchmarks for efficiency. And I think there's a role the board could play in trying to articulate some standards that, you know, whether it's voluntary, involuntary, people could move towards. And I, I think I probably disagree with you a little bit, Bill, in that I think that there is a difference between medium-sized and large, but I'm not sure that there's the same benefit for micro-sized over medium. And so that there may be places, and when you look around the state, and when you look at who's already gone through that, often there are districts that have more, there are more families in duress. And I think that's partly because that's how, they've tried to achieve some efficiencies. And I think we need to, I think we need to help people start understanding and start thinking through, and it's going to be complicated, what are the different options you have to support your children to reach our high ambitious educational goals, and what are the most cost-effective ways to do that? And those are hard conversations. We can't, we cannot afford everything you want to do. What is it that we really want to do, and how do we make sure that when we spend our resources, we're spending them to move us as close to those goals as possible? And I think that there's a role for the board in trying to lay out what that path is, as a policy directive. And then that's something that would serve districts, whether the legislature moves to something that's a top-down consolidation, or whether it's a voluntary initiative that they have a more year to sort of pull it together. But I think what we need to start moving towards is what are the fundamentals that really, that do drive costs? And, you know, you were talking, we were talking about, at the break, about some of the teacher staffing patterns. I think we should talk about those, because frankly, some of them are really concerning. And we have a chance to provide some guidance. We have a district, a school that has 200 kids and 40 paraprofessionals. I don't think that's a good way to spend our money. I really don't.
It's a lot.
And so, you know, I think what we can do is come up with some guidelines for what seem to be practices and benchmarks that seem, based on what research we have, what data we do have, to be promising, and then move, help move districts towards those, whether it's voluntary or involuntary.
And I say this with all sincerity. I can't be, could not be more impressed with the work that the agency and the board is doing right now on this issue. And I think that that's reflected by the resolve that you demonstrated, working with supervisory unions to get greater efficiencies, and it's demonstrated by the work that Secretary Holcomb has done, going out to many different locales, talking with communities about what we face in the state. When I look at the consolidation and governance bullet item, a couple of things occur to me. One is that, for folks that are not particularly well-informed on the subject, it appears like there may only be two options, if you look at the last sentence. One is a one-size-top-down model, and the other is locally tailored solutions. And there's, that's a, those are points on a continuum. There are options in between. And even though there are varying opinions about 883, 883 was an option built, because it provided some choices along the way. So, and the second thing that I noticed about this paragraph is that although this is a legislative agenda, the first sentence in consolidation and governance really speaks to local education agencies rather than the General Assembly. So what you say is, "The state board recommends and encourages local education agencies." I think that you, as a body, the whole or offline, could alter that paragraph to recognize the need for consideration of useful change, and encourage the General Assembly not to embrace a one-size-top-down model, which I think would be, you know, would be appropriate, but for them to give due consideration as a legislative body to what levers, or incentives, or options, or information they might provide to local school districts as they consider the change process themselves. That would be another point on the continuum. Another point on the continuum would be, and I'm not promoting 883, but another 883-type approach. That's what the General Assembly should be thoughtful about. And if the state board is realistic, and I believe you are, about the challenges that face the state economically, from an educational opportunity standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint, you could just encourage them to be as thoughtful as they possibly can with regard to helping districts understand the options that are going to better serve children and taxpayers, and include that in their discourse. That's really the main point that I wanted to make.
We should recommend the legislature be thoughtful. Krista and Stacy.
So I just wanted to go back to when we drafted this, it was two or three months ago, so this is prior to the election. So maybe this is a paragraph that we need to rework again as a committee and go through, and that's why it's really helpful to hear what other people's opinions are as we're recrafting that paragraph.
Well, I was about to ask that question. Is the committee willing, hearing some of these discussions on not only this point, but some others, are you willing to meet before our December meeting and perhaps accept suggested amendments, and then come back to us with a, hopefully a final version at the December meeting?
I'm sure that we can do this. The question becomes, is what direction we can do it? And some of the stuff is semantic in terms of pointing out points on a continual. I think it's implicit that, there's lots of points in there.
Yes.
And we might land here in one place, and we might land there in another. And to simply say that that reality is true for the legislature, that we must recognize that diversity, is, that's all right.
Well, and that's, here's a good time to bring up kind of a board behavior comment that's been in my mind for a long time. I think I would encourage the committee to reconvene, look at some of these other points that have been brought up, but especially look at this section on governance.
Well, and one in particular...
And let me just, you know, and keep in mind that, yes, there's differences of opinion here. And I fully appreciate, as a native Vermonter, you know, how important every little school is and every little community. But we can't do that anymore. But I would hope that the committee would come back to us with a version of this section, with something that is forward-looking, that addresses the situation, but is something that we all can buy into as well. I mean, not so watered down that we all can buy into it. And here's the point I want to leave with you all, and I'm sorry not everyone is here today. My understanding is how a board operates is that when you come to a controversial issue, you fight it out at the board level. But once the board buys into a position on whatever that issue is, that's not only the board position, that's every individual board member's position. That's something you sacrifice, you sacrifice your personal point of view when you join a board. I think one of the problems we had last year on this issue is that we came up with a pretty strong position, but we had individual board members behind our back, out there proposing other ways of looking at this particular issue. So I only bring this up now to suggest to you, I think we need to strengthen this, but we need to strengthen it in a way that we all can buy into. I see a lot of people nodding, so...
Stacy's been trying to get her...
Oh, that's true.
Sorry, I interrupted.
No, 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 you're good. I think, yeah, this, Charlie here, I agree, Stephen with what you were saying, because this doesn't follow exactly, it kind of follows more kind of where Jeff was coming from. I think for me, just the verb "will" in that last sentence, I think it's the "will prove more appropriate and acceptable," different than "may prove," or although, given what Stephen said, if we all believe it will prove, then we should stick with the "will." I guess I question that that's the, that would be the, I would question whether we as a board think that the locally tailored solutions will prove more appropriate and acceptable or not. So I think if that's a word we want to leave in, we should hash someone out a little bit.
Well, if the committee is willing to get together again, excuse me just a minute, then I think we ought to allow individual board members and perhaps people that represent other players in this world, you know, we ought to, you know, if anyone has a thought on how this could be rewritten, you ought to take a look at that, but in the end, it's the legislative committee that's going to make the decision.
That's fair.
Who's on the legislative committee? Bill, Krista, Mark? Okay. Sean Reed, you've had your hand up for a while.
I guess I have a sort of a more direct question, which is that if this board, or the individual members of this board felt that there were some positive things in 883 that, you know, was clearly at the very end of the session and didn't have time for retweaking, and then the Senate didn't act on it, is that it may be very useful and helpful that if this board does agree that there were, as maybe somebody has said, that there were some positive things in 883, that maybe perhaps a recommendation would be similar, just to what maybe Jeff is saying, is that we actually come up with a, sort of a more articulate recommendation in terms of what we'd like to see them accomplish, as opposed to this may do this and may do that. And I think that there's a lot of reasons for why it's written the way it is. And I agree with Stephen that sometimes you get things so watered down that it doesn't mean anything. And I think we need to take another stab at it. And the other thing is not that I'm saying we go against the governor, or even, you know, Rebecca, who's sitting here, but if this board, as an independent board, feels differently than the governor...
So be it.
You do what you do.
I think that that's the checks and balances in our system. And I'm not weighing in one way or the other what the governor has said, because I haven't heard him say much about this, except that he loves our community, you know, our small communities. I mean, I don't think he's actually taken a political stand on 883 or anything, certainly recently.
No. Steve?
Steve Dale from the School Boards Association. Just two perspectives. One is, when the new role of the state board was created many years ago, like, two years ago, three years ago...
Two.
One of the visions was that it would be the forum where a variety of interests came together to talk about important policy issues. There may be an opportunity here in December, whether it's your meeting day or somewhere close to that, to actually do a specific roundtable around this issue, to see if, in fact, sort of where things are. I mean, ultimately, you all have to decide on your legislative agenda, but it might be an opportunity to create actually a forum to see if there's common ground on this very important issue. So it's just a thought. And in the meantime, of course, all of our associations are working on this with our members, trying to get to a place of, when all, and it's all going to continue to emerge because so many people are interested in it, but it might be another good forum.
Well, let me respond to you, and if the, if the three or four associations were to put such a forum together, I can guarantee you that this board would participate and cooperate with you.
That's great to hear.
You should also guarantee that to the people who have different points of view, too.
Oh, of course, of course.
Right.
One other thought is simply, and I just, I throw this in as food for thought, it's not a position of our association, but it's one thing that got discussed in the context of the last two days, is, as we think about how this might unfold, I agree with the comments that were made about there needs to be multiple ways of looking at this issue, as opposed to a single way of looking. But one way it really should be, I think ultimately, that if we've got some districts that are in deep trouble, where kids just don't get the opportunities, and the costs are substantially higher than anybody else in the state, there may be a role for the state board in engaging those districts. And I don't know what that looks like, but obviously, this, so this isn't just an academic conversation for the board to weigh in on a legislative discussion, but I think there should be a discussion about, is there a role for the state board, and what would it look like? And I know you all have had a variety of experiences over the last couple of years with individual community challenges, but I think part of that has been sort of, what's the frame, what are the criteria, what's the context? And so there may be a way that, there's a critical role for the board as we move forward with these efforts.
I want to come back to Steve's remark, but Mark has had his hand up a minute ago.
Stay on this subject, I can hold, I can talk about mine after.
Actually, what Steve just said is something that we've had lots of conversations with as individuals and not in a group. And if we can get away from this thing of consolidation versus non-consolidation, and start thinking about, where are the good functioning schools, and where are the not-so-good functioning schools and those organizations? And can we focus our energy, though, on those places that are not working well? And maybe we do at that point say that this place or that place that's not functioning so well needs to be changed, whether they want to or not. But that's a very different dynamic and a different kind of conversation. I think we're going in that direction with the education quality standards, and what we're trying to do with that, and looking at it in a comprehensive kind of way. But I would love to get to the point where we could say just exactly that, is this place is working okay, let's leave it be, or it needs to make these kinds of changes, or else it needs some more dramatic changes.
Just to be clear, and when I was pontificating before, you know, I recognize that under the current law, we have the authority to reconfigure, and I'm not suggesting that. But what I'm suggesting is that the voluntary process that was set up in two pieces of legislation is not working. And we can't wait any longer to address... And we can't wait any longer to address this issue. So what I'm looking for is some language here that would somehow encourage, or let me use the word, force, school districts that are in real need of consolidating to do that, whether it comes through a state board rule or if it comes through legislation, that doesn't matter to me. But I don't think we can afford to, we already have, we have a long enough history to know the voluntary process is not going to work, in my opinion.
I don't know, but I would be. I don't know whether it's too soon to know that, or whether it's the right time to know that, or whether, whether things are right now.
Nicest way you've ever, always, that you've ever told me you disagree with me. That was very polite of you.
Well, I could have said it in other words.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
We keep mentioning the word time, whether it's the right time to do something or we don't have time to wait. What, I know in 883, we had some times out that were actually, how do we feel about those times? Are those deadlines, good deadlines because there was some, there was a, one of the things we heard, I think, over the last few days also was an opportunity to find a meshing between solid consolidation according to somebody based on some formula versus from the ground up, that continuum, if you will. And, and what, how comfortable are we with choosing a timeframe? And how much of that timeframe should we be putting out? Because we don't mention time in here.
I don't remember the legislation dates.
Twenty twenty.
I had a general feeling that it was ample time. But I agree with Bill, whatever we can do to further this whole process coming from the local basis is better, and allowing sufficient time.
Because, because I think the time piece is important if we want communities to be engaged. I mean, the thing that's really important is for folks to understand something is going to be happening. If there was a consensus over the last two days, it was something is going to happen, and it's not going to be pretty, and if you don't take it serious, you're going to be forced to do something. So...
That's encouraging.
So there's, well, at least that's my interpretation anyways. But, so, so the, so the fact that, that that time piece is important because the message that we send out is you either start acting and asking for help, not AOE necessarily coming to you and telling you you're going to get help, that's really important. Because what we're really talking about is 1,440 school board members feeling the fire under their feet and moving with the leadership within, within the SU structure or the district, well, it would be an SU structure. And that, that's an important impetus. And I think that's the compromise somewhere along the line that we're trying to find.
Stacy?
I agree with you, Mark, about, I think time came up a lot. I think what I like about the end date time is I think it allows all parties to maybe have a little bit of breathing room, so that people who are saying something needs to happen, it needs to happen now, can feel assured that something's going to happen because there's a date. And for the people who say we need more time, and I absolutely agree, I'm so excited about the idea of helping people to get this information and redefine what local means, but they also have time. So if we can give it that, whether it's that 2020, 2018 was tossed down.
Twenty twenty, July 1st, 2020.
Right, yes, well, then 2018 was something from yesterday as people were throwing out.
Right, but I'm talking about 2020.
Right, that, perhaps that allows every group to feel like that date gives them what they, well, or no one likes it, which would be, then unanimously, everyone's unhappy with that date. But still, I think you could use that time to let everybody like, okay, something's going to happen, and we have time to get everyone the information we need.
Okay, we're basically talking about this last sentence and what we want to say in that last sentence in that bullet. And help me...
I think, I think what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, is that I would like the legislative committee to look at that, that whole section on consolidation in governance, in that it's, a lot has happened since this was originally drafted. And, and I mean, I think you've heard some other points of view, and I would just ask you to look at that, that whole section again.
Yeah.
I agree with the possibility, I guess, as Jeff arranged the, mentioned it first, was that, you know, that it's not night and day, there are other possibilities along the way.
Well, help me frame that kind of thinking while we're sort of meeting as a committee of the whole here, because this is important kind of thing. What would we be seeing in here?
Well, I, my point of view is that we need to find a way that this happens, that it's not just possible out there with some, with some voluntary commitment, that indeed this is going to happen. And, but find a way that, that it can be initially started from the local level, but with the understanding is if the local level does not take this seriously, that there's going to be some kind of state force that's going to make it happen, whether it's the state board of education, or legislation, the secretary, the governor, I don't, I don't care who that is, but that there's, you don't have the freedom anymore to just ignore this issue. And, and the reason for that is, from my point of view, not financial, I think it'll have a financial benefit. The reason for that is that there are kids, Vermonters out there, that are not getting equal educational opportunity. You cannot be in a school of 20, 25 kids, or maybe even 50 kids, and be getting the same educational opportunity that's being offered at a larger school. You don't need to go to Harvard or Yale to know that, I don't think.
Sean Marie?
I have...
God, I'm talking way too much.
I have two very separate points. The first is that when you look at one, page one to two, what the bullets follow is this one sentence, or part of a sentence, that says, "Areas for further specific inquiry include..." So then we go to weighted students, rolling student averages, healthcare costs, and school finance. So remember that these bullets are actually after the colon of, for further specific inquiry. So what we're actually saying, or what I hear Stephen saying and others saying, is that this is not something we're thinking needs further inquiry, we're looking for action.
Where are you? I'm lost.
So you look at page one, at the bottom of page one...
Oh, gotcha.
Which comes before the bullets.
Right.
It says, this is what we want, this is areas we see further specific inquiry that we would like to see. And what I'm hearing is that this isn't necessarily more inquiry, I think that I'm, at least I'm thinking that maybe we should be making a suggestion or requesting an action.
Stronger word, language, yes, you're right.
Right, so that this doesn't necessarily mean that we're looking for further inquiry, it would be, it would be separate in that this is, one of our legislative agenda items includes, and then it would be more of an action statement.
Yeah.
So that's, I know you want to continue on this, but one of the other things that came up yesterday at the table that I was at at the end, and that is part of 883 and part of our strategic planning and part of our legislative agenda, all has to do with equity of opportunities. And in 883, the purpose was increased equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities available to students throughout the state in order to enable Vermonters, blah, 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 blah. So wouldn't it be practical for us to maybe put out a policy statement like the assessment on what, what a variety of educational opportunities and a school looks like?
That was, that was going to be my comment, because at one point, we had worked on a committee discussing what is the proper size of a district.
Well, not just size, but what does it look like?
What does a high-quality educational system look like?
Right. I mean...
And that's what you're auditing in the school quality reviews.
Right.
So, and that's what I'm going back to benchmarks.
Right.
What does it look like if things are going well?
So I see right now coming up with two tasks. One is to come up with some kind of a more direct action statement within the legislative agenda, and then a policy paper or a statement, or however you want to call it, on a quality education, and it could include school size, it could include an elementary school size, it could include a, a high school size, I mean, it could, it could be part of that on the positive note versus a school of blank is not good.
So have we provided enough guidance to the legislative committee to...
I would like more.
You'd like more, okay.
Yeah. What is it that you really want to say in, in terms of a replacement sentence here? Do you want to say that the state board will review things in 2020 or some such date and then make determinations as necessary for efficient and effective school districts? Do we want something that strong?
We have, we have data, we have data already that supports lack of equity and learning opportunities for students based on governance model? Size of school.
I don't know how comprehensive that is as a needs assessment, too, but...
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, because that's, that would be the next step, if we, if we say that there's a need for change based on governance.
What we're trying to do at the agency right now is prepare the data and fit statistical models that might be able to help us gain some insight on that. It's a little bit challenging because of the number of models and the impact on, if you don't have enough of them, you have a power issue in terms of detecting effects. Because we have so much complexity, it's hard to actually model for it. So we're working on it. So it's hard to even evaluate the impact of governance. I mean, I think what we do see is there is, there is gross inequity across the state in terms of the kinds of opportunities kids have.
And there's a number of different governance models that fit within that.
What you tend to see, yes.
The low performing.
But one of the challenges with that is, one of the reasons that, for example, we didn't compare SUs and SDs is SDs tend to have more children who are living in poverty on average than SUs. So when you make those simple, that's why we didn't really put much stock in the Pellon report, when you make those kind of simple, bivariate conclusions, what you're really doing is just restating the obvious. So we have to, it has to be more sophisticated than that.
Well, this, this document that we're working on here, we don't need to get into the specifics. We're, this is a philosophical document.
I get where you're going now, we can follow.
That, you know, that directs the way we think as, as we approach whatever topic we're talking about. Mark, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm okay.
I think one of the things that really stood out to me, and I wish, I'm sorry, I can't remember which school district or supervisor union it was, but they were the ones who were impelled...
That only gets worse with age, you know.
Right, so good. I can actually remember which room we were sitting in, we were in Montclair. Who had, who had gone to have said they were impelled to do a study because their, they had a vacancy in superintendence, and they had said, "We called our neighbors, we, we want to consolidate, we want to cooperate," and they literally did not return, there was one group that literally did not return their phone calls. I think if I was looking for some sort of top-down model, it would be, basically, you have to return the phone calls. So I think what makes me nervous about the, like, the high-functioning schools or the failing schools is it, it sounds fine to say, let's leave the high-functioning schools alone, but I think that's in some ways just leaving our poor-performing schools just out on their own and kind of pitting schools against each other, instead of saying, everybody, you have to talk to your neighbors. And maybe you're a really high-functioning school, but maybe you have a resource you can share that you haven't yet shared, or maybe you're, there's something that you, there's another school that maybe is splandering one area, but they actually have something you don't. And is, that's the top-down that I'd love to see, is everyone has to talk to each other. It's, it's too Sesame Street-y, but it feels like...
But I, but I think it also speaks to the fact that we have to do a better job of defining what a good school is. And one of the things that we do want to do is develop, and people aren't going to like this, growth models, but at the SU level, because some of our quote-unquote low-performing schools are actually making tremendous gains, but their students will never score the way some of our more affluent communities are. It doesn't mean they're not great schools, it just means that they start with students who are scoring lower initially. And so we have to be more sophisticated in how we talk about what quality is if we're going to achieve that goal and not just penalize poor towns.
You see, what I think is needed here, Bill, is a philosophical statement that says, the time has come for new governance. And you don't need to get into the detail of how that's going to happen. But, I mean, I think this board needs to go on record, recognizing that the voluntary system has not completely worked, and we go on record as saying, it is time and has to happen for equal education purposes. And, and, and just, you know, that's our position.
Yeah.
And, and, well, but that's not, that's not what is said here now.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to reach for what is the thing that needs to be said.
Well, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we can do it here, but that's why I'm suggesting that you, your committee reconvenes, those of us that feel strongly about us should send some language, and the committee makes a decision of how you're going to go after, after hearing this conversation.
So, and when we have that call, because it will probably be a call.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We would, we would...
We're not paying them for calls, are we, Perry?
No.
We're only billing you by the hour.
We could ask Perry to make sure that the V organizations sitting out there have the information to phone in and weigh in as well.
And I would like to add, we just talked about how students that were debating this issue, I mean, I would, no, I do, I feel like we can't just go the Vs. No offense, you're great, but we need to include more people in the conversation to get a better picture. And I love the fact that you invited students to participate in that debate. And I would love to hear from them and some of their, I mean, I would love to see that debate, if you have that, and to be able to send that, so to hear that student voice. I think you also need to reach out to others if we, because I know you're saying like...
Well, that's why I'm saying now, I mean, if there's some agreement that we can come to on the board, that we make a philosophical statement of the direction we're heading. And I think the details could come from subsequent meetings that would include a broader, broader representation of Vermonters.
And I think it'd be more powerful if we called that meeting and not ask other organizations to call it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Have a legislative committee.
Steve, I take back the suggestion that you arrange a meeting and we'll come, I'm getting some disagreement here, so I'll come.
I think it's more powerful if we organize it and ask people.
Healthy conversation.
Very good.
So the way we're leaving this is that there's been some minor changes proposed in the legislative agenda document, there's been a very healthy discussion on the, on the governance section. If people have thoughts of how, what language should be there, they should convey that to the chairman of the committee, Mr. Mathis, and that we will take another look at this document back in, in December. And hopefully, we can adopt it in December. I mean, the legislature's adjourning, so we really ought to adopt it.
We need to take action in December, we also need to be thinking about the legislative meeting in January, and also, I want to think a little bit more about getting model legislative language from some of these other sources, and enlisting legislators to sponsor bills so that these things just don't disappear.
Well, one note I have is that once we have this document settled, we need to figure out what, what our process is in, in making it work. I mean, if there's things, for example, if there's things in here that require a piece of legislation, we need to find somebody to introduce that bill.
Yeah. I think governance and money are going to take on a life of their own, and we'll be reacting to them, but other things we should be leading and putting a piece in.
All right. I really thank the chairman and the members of this committee, you're, I mean, this is a lot of hard work, and so please don't take it personally that you've heard these comments that I think...
That's what we're here for.
All right. You want a break? You want to move on to...
Do we have to call Karen?
Well, we've got, we were going to talk about the summit.
We kind of just did.
Think we've done that?
Well, not exactly, but...
Well, there were other topics discussed at the summit besides consolidation.
But I, I will say, around the subject of consolidation and cost, what we're talking about here, it's still a lot more progress than what three groups ended up with, I think.
Well, what, those of you that attended the two-day summit, what were your, and I'm opening this up to anyone that was, that's here that attended, what were your thoughts at the conclusion of it? How did you think it went? Stacy?
Sure, I'll start. I, I had a couple of things. I was very impressed with how many people gave up two full days of their business, work, home, whatever people gave up, and just thinking about like the chart on my refrigerator about who was picking up which child where and who was, what was happening for lunch. I can only imagine other people's life was much more complicated to get out for two full days, and I think there was almost no attrition from what I could see on that second day. There were a couple hundred people from a wide, so I was very appreciative of that diversity of people, at least in terms of the professions and what we were doing, so the commitment to be there. I was very excited to hear how many, how much consensus that there was around the commitment to early childhood, whether we're talking pre-K, or zero to five, or zero to eight, or prenatal, or whatever, those people really seemed to recognize the importance of that and the lining up, the agency of human services with the agency of education, especially in those early years. And I was surprised, I thought there was a lot of momentum in the room for some sort of governance restructure.
of governance restructure. And I, I was impressed to see, to see that those things really stuck with me. I guess I was a little disappointed, we didn't come out with like seven specific action steps, but I, I think that would probably be pretty challenging to do in a 200-person, two-day retreat, but it felt pretty worthwhile.
I, I enjoyed visiting with folks, talking with them, seeing different nuances and things that I hadn't before. The two big issues that seem to get interconnected, now you see them together, now you don't, is money and governance. And also, sort of floating in and out of the conversations was the staffing questions. And if you're going to deal with anything that deals with the money, you're going to have to deal with staffing. And I think we should spend this time that Krista and I have been talking about next month to go over that, because there's where the money is. But I found that, and the first part is that people would start laying out what they thought of as the problem and leaping to solutions very fast, which isn't, without really thoughtfully defining what the problem was that we're trying to solve. And that was particularly true in the staffing thing. I think it just floated out there hazy on a cloud, and it's going to have to get more concrete, but I enjoyed it.
I, I would, I would agree with everything I'm hearing so far. There was, there was some nice presentations. One of the things that, you know, we, we live and talk this stuff on a monthly basis, and if you're involved in, in day-to-day operations in the school board's way I am, you're, you're seeing and hearing both sides of it all, all the time. And that's why I tend to be really kind of centrist on, on this and feeling for both sides. But there's some folks that were, that were there, had, really didn't understand it at all, and, and were, had a few aha moments for themselves. And, and I think that's the case as the more and more we talk with our communities about the challenges we have with, with the relationship between staffing programs, governance, and, and what they pay for, to get all that. And, and it's, and it, and it isn't one size fits all. You can't read an article in a paper on Vermont Digger or something and then translate that directly to your own district or your SU all the time. And so there's, there is a, there is a pretty good-sized learning curve. And so when I, when I take that out, you know, especially when we, I was at a finance table at the, at the end, and everybody around the table was very in tune with the issues. These weren't, these weren't the first folks I was just talking about, very in tune with the issues. And we could not come up with any solid ideas to move this forward. And that, that was disheartening.
You had a pretty sophisticated table in terms of their knowledge base.
Yes.
And they weren't coming up to consensus.
Probably too much, right.
You could see all the sides.
Can I ask just a question to those that went? One of the things that I find consistent in when these summits happen is that educators aren't invited. And I know that there were five out of the 200 educators were invited. And I'm just wondering when we're going to start having more teacher voice and actually having people on the ground that are there that can be part of the conversation? Because just for two reasons. One is because they're experiencing.
There were more than five.
Yeah. Well, I just know that when, I, because I asked, and I was told that five were invited. And so other people had dual roles, that maybe they are educators, but that when you have people on the ground that can tell you situations, what's going on, and talk about issues. But also, when things keep happening to educators and they're not part of it, that's where I think some of the friction comes about when we start talking about initiatives. And if their voice isn't in the creation, then it's hard in implementation, especially when a lot of implementations being asked upon to do things in your free time. So right now, we're writing graduation requirements, and we get five days to do that through the whole year, and a lot of it actually happens after school hours. So I just think that we need to be mindful of educators being part of the solution and being, getting more educator voices into the conversation.
You'll appreciate that. One of the exercises we had, we had buckets in the table, and each person had to choose a blue card, which gave a perspective. And mine was a high school math teacher who wanted to co-teach a program and ultimately had some great stuff, ultimately didn't have any planning time.
Which is, okay, good.
And you experienced the fact that, you know, you can only take so many days away from your job in order to come to these, these things. And so there's a tremendous amount of.
And I couldn't go to miss three days in a row.
And I believe somebody threw a calendar out there, you know, a few times, the getting away from the agrarian calendar so that we have a way to have a calendar that operates to match the needs of the professionalism of the job.
Or even allowing calendar days to allow teachers from multiple districts to meet? Like, if we can't agree on a state calendar, can we agree on five days where it's free for all educators to meet? I mean, that's, that's huge. I know we can't agree on a calendar, but.
Other comments from the, from the public on the two-day summit?
Sean Murray hadn't waited.
Steve?
I thought, I agreed with Stacy's description of it. A rich conversation, a lot of people, a very wide range of experiences. I mean, one of the, the key things I think that you can't help but come away from that kind of a session is that, I mean, our system is so complicated that it's hard for those of us sitting in the room to like make sense of it or, or make definitive statements because it doesn't apply to all these, and it does apply to these. I mean, I'm sitting at tables with people who had no concept about those things. And so you're starting to have a discussion about something, and then you're, you realize you have to go back and talk about what's a school district, what's a supervisor union, who has authority to do what, how do budgets get approved, how does the funding system work? I mean, it's, you know, it's very difficult to do mass planning with 200 people when the experience is so broad. And you're also, you're also struck with the educational challenge that we have, that we have to help our citizens understand the education system so that they can even, they can even be influencers of the directions that you're all talking, that we're all talking about. So I, I thought it was very, very useful, two days for that purpose if nothing else, but I expect it will generate some focused strategies when the reports start to get written.
Jeff?
Jeff Francis from the Superintendent's Association. First, I just want to respond to Krista's point, because I was part of the planning team for the conference. We heard some criticisms that there weren't enough teachers, weren't enough students, weren't enough others. And for me, that's a catch-22, because to plan something like this summit, logistically, was an immense challenge. And I know that there were far more than five teachers there. I, I think that there were invitations issued both through school administrators and through the NEA. It was a challenge for people to get two days. It was a challenge for anybody to get two days. It was also logistically challenging because it was a South Burlington location. So one of the criticisms that I heard, and there were 12 or 14 students there, was why weren't there any students there from Wyndham County, for example? And the notion of having a student come from Wyndham County involves travel back and forth from Wyndham County and/or having a student potentially in an unchaperoned situation, staying overnight in between. So a lot of those things could have been addressed, I think, if the planning window for this had extended beyond the two or three months that it was. But to go to Mark's point, there was an effort made to make sure that within the meeting itself, that everybody had ample, ample opportunity for voice. And there was an effort that was made by the organization that Lauren Curry is associated with.
Terran Foundation.
The Terran Foundation, to make sure that points of view, like a teacher who had 21 kids in a small rural school and not a lot of planning time either. So it, it, I would say that while in any event you may find yourself subject to criticism that you weren't inclusive enough, there were a lot of efforts put into making it inclusive. I'm not sure who told you that there were only five teachers there, but that's just not true. So that was sort of to respond to your question. For me, when you are dealing with something as complicated as the future of public education in Vermont, you are faced with an array of challenges. And I thought that, that this event was a good event because of the attention that was paid to a fair process and the ability to have voice represented there. What I found remarkable, and I, or impressive, and I referred to this when I talked about your legislative agenda, was that I thought that there was a tremendous affirmation for the course that we have set for ourselves with regard to public education in Vermont in the area of quality. So there was a, a lot of focus on early learning, there was a lot of focus on personalized learning, there was a lot of focus on the challenges associated with schools working as a surrogate for the human services arenas. So I thought there was affirmation of engagement on matters of quality. I personally was impressed, and there were not any solutions offered per se, that there seemed to be recognition as a result of the presentations that were heard and the conversations that took place, that we are challenged organizationally in this state. I won't say governance, but I will say that there was a lot of emphasis on inequities and disparities that are manifestations of the evolution of a rural state's education system and how that has played out with localized everything. And that went to the whole notion of can we provide good opportunities at an affordable cost for every child in the state equitably? And there was, there were six tables of 10 to 12 people each who said they didn't think that we could under our existing structure. The conversation about the funding system was just as confusing and unresolved as any conversation about the funding system that I've, that I have witnessed. And essentially, there were 30 people working on that issue ultimately, and they could not come back with a consensus of what should happen. And I think that that's reflective of the, of the challenges associated with a property taxation system that we rely on to fund public education and people witnessing greater needs, but also knowing that we spend among the higher amounts per pupil in the country right now. So that, I think, whether we like it or not, is going to get a lot of attention in the General Assembly in their efforts to resolve it. So people asked me coming out of the summit, what do I think? I don't think that we lost any ground with respect to the discourse around these important policy issues. I think that we gained more understanding among more people, and I think that there is a tremendous amount of work to do. But, you know, all in all, I thought it was very, very useful, notwithstanding concerns that when you have an event like this and you have to limit it, which we did, you had 200 people there, and there were others who would have liked to have been there who were not, so.
Thank you. Did you, yes. Would you identify yourself?
Yep, I'm Jennifer Burton. I'm an educational technology person here at Hazen. And I, I first wanted to respond to the idea that maybe there were only five teachers there, and maybe that's inaccurate, I, I don't know, but it would have been nice to be more represented, I think, as teachers. I personally found out about it following a Twitter feed, which I just started using. I should have started using it a long time ago, but anyway, I think there could have been other ways to include people outside by advertising about it, first of all. Like, I think, I was surprised that it was happening and I didn't know about it, and that I found out about it through Twitter. And then I think by using technology, you probably could have engaged people outside of that room in a lot more ways and made teachers feel like they at least could, could be witness to what was happening if they couldn't be directly involved. I think those, those are things that you might have been able to do.
Well, now, this, we're not responsible. The state board is, was not responsible for.
I'm just responding to the five teachers, the idea of five teachers in the room, whether or not that's true, and what could have been done to sort of ameliorate that.
I think we got that point.
Ken, just sorry. Like, just because there's usually no teachers in the room, or very few, or I find myself being the only one, and I feel like there's, people love it when teachers then give a story from what actually happens in the real classroom. So by inviting more people in, and I'm not just saying this conference, but just in general, is just getting that, engaging that population.
Hey, can I ask a sort of a.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
It has to do with, superintendents quite often were building administrators who were quite often teachers.
They had to be.
So.
But they're not certified.
When you, I mean, is there really that much of a disconnect between teachers, principals, superintendents, or?
Can you just give one quick example? We had.
There is, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I know as, the further you get away from teaching, the further away from the classroom you get, but, okay.
Well, just a quick example, we had a fellow, one of my coworkers passed away. And one of our administrators took over his position until they could find somebody. And then afterwards, he was like, "I, I forgot." And he'd been a teacher for 25 years. She's like, "I forgot the rhythm, I forgot how hard it is, and it's going to make me an administrator that I've done that, and I recognize that." So I think there's a bit of amnesia sometimes that you put past. Just answer quickly.
On campaign from our principal association, I, I just wanted to share, first of all, I, I would agree with those folks that said, well, first of all, I found day one setting the context sort of wrong, just because not everybody had the same context going in. But day two, I found invigorating. And I would just say this, you know, there was a panel of teachers, there was a panel that included a principal, a superintendent, a school board member, and there's anything that got, I went in saying, unless we leave with very concrete solutions for how to save money, then it wouldn't have been a success. And I said to myself afterwards, you know, more important than even coming out with this idea or this idea was a sense of optimism. Because really, I mean, really, we all would be very discouraged if you sort of thought about all the work that went into H83 and all the issues, and all the things that are happening in lots of spots in the world, is, I mean, we could tend to be really pessimistic. And yet, in the room was a spirit that we're proud of what, what we've done in education, Vermont, and Vermont education is really high-quality, that we have committed to each other. So if there's anything I'll say, is that we left feeling that, all right, we don't have the right answers now, but we can get there. And I still feel that. I mean, I guess I feel like optimism has gone through most of my career, and I still consider myself a teacher, Kristen, by the way. But I also will say that I was impressed with the group, the organization. I've never been in a room where there was a person who was drawing, a graphic designer drawing out everything people were doing, but there was a sense that we can solve it.
I have those pictures.
And, so that's what I want to share.
I think that's a good point to leave it. Thank you, Ken, for that positive statement. And I appreciate everyone kicking, kicking in and sharing your, your thoughts and comments on the two-day. Obviously, there'll be more, more to be said and done from it, and it sounds like a great opportunity. Let's move on to the last item on the agenda, the pre-K rulemaking. And we're, we're going to call Karen Edwards again. I guess that's what you did at the last meeting. And because.
Do we know what we're going to ask her?
I think the confusion might be the delay. Yeah, we had, we had, we had expected the guidance to go out about three weeks ago, and we had expected that the Icar filing would have happened then too, but everything's been held up a bit. So I think that's why there's confusion.
Okay.
Because I said last time, we were expecting to have public hearings in November.
I guess I have one other question, and this is Sean Murray again, is, did the transition rules go out to school districts?
That's in the guidance that is in the governor's office right now. So in that guidance, there is a piece that Brad James wrote for, really for business managers, that explained the budgeting and predicting pieces of this and likely effects on budgets and all of that. There is Title I guidance about, you know, what Title I funds can and can't be used for. There is the, there are the interim policy guidance, and that covers pre-qualification, expansion by schools, pre-K regions. There's another piece that I'm forgetting. Oh, there was something about nutrition programs.
And the partnerships? Pre-approved?
The pre-K, do you mean the pre-K regions or the pre-qualification? Two different things.
The pre-qualifications for preschools, private preschools.
Yep. We've got the application for that ready to go. We said we'd have it done by, and available by the 21st, but we're, we're hoping that the guidance will be sent out by then, but that application is all ready to go. Though there's also guidance about, you know, when schools, who want, schools that want to increase hours, under what circumstances they would need to get approval to do that, and under what circumstances can they just do it without having any approval?
I guess you'll be on our agenda in December.
I guess I will be. Let's hope that this doesn't get delayed any longer.
Bill? Bill Mathis has a question.
I'm just terribly confused about all of this. We haven't had a discussion of what these rules are.
I can't hear the question.
I'm terribly confused about the general process on this. We haven't had a discussion of what's in these rules. The only thing we've got is the 22 pages or so of strike-throughs, which are very voluminous. We haven't talked about the policy issues, and we're supposed to be adopting the rules, and I'm not sure about the public process. And so I guess I'm, I'm back to square one, is what's in these rules, and what's the timelines for our actions, and when do we review them?
On your agenda is September and October. There is a strike-through, yeah, there is a copy. I actually sent Perry the copy with your change in it, and one was, one had the strikeouts, and one was, had them deleted. I sent that quite a while ago.
I've seen that. It's pretty lengthy, and it doesn't have an abstract to it. But that's all I've seen.
I think the confusion comes from, I believe, this is where I think, I think that, that we were supposed to see the, we were supposed to approve it to start the process. And then I think what Bill's saying is he believed, as I did, that we would, we would approve them again after input from the public and constituents. We would approve them again as presented with changes, and then they would go to ICAR. And it sounds like what you're saying is that, we, do we not see them again as a state board?
You do see them again, and after you see them again, they go to LCAR.
Okay, so they go to ICAR, then LCAR?
Yes, they go to ICAR, they go out for public hearing, they go back to you, and then they go to LCAR.
Does that, does that help, Bill?
So you will, you'll be at the December meeting and give us an update on where we are in this?
Yes. Hopefully, I'll be able to get there in person this time.
Yeah, I, I was strongly urged to do that. It would be much more helpful, and, and this is, this is very difficult, and I'm sure it is for you as well.
Yeah, I'm homesick today.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
We'll let you go.
So, we'll let you go, and look forward to seeing you in December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Feel better, Karen.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Feel better, Karen.
Thank you.
Bye.
Does anyone else have a, anything else they want to bring up before this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.